Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for April 9, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. The hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell. Ms. Weewell, are you muted? Okay, we'll circle back. I see her. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Betterbraza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell. I think you're still muted, Ms. Weewell.
Hi, sorry, Madam Chair, my Zoom has been acting up. I am here, but I might just take a moment to restart my computer, so I will be right back.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge. Yeah, please, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start off today with the approval of a hearing minutes scheduled for 9:30. These minutes are from March 21 and March 26 of this year. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
There is.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell. I'll circle back to her. Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Is Ms. Weewell back? Okay, if not, we have enough for that to accept the motion. Please proceed.
Chair, next we'll move on to the extension scheduled for 9:30 a.m. At this point, I will read the case number and the address for all of them, one behind another, and then I will turn it over to Madam Chair to see if there are any questions or any.
Yes, so just a quick, so as folks know, Mr. Coburn sent the members all of the extension information and reasoning for the extensions, and so what we'd like to do is if you have any questions, to ask them, but to make one motion at the end to approve the extensions as requested. So with that, I'll have Mr. Stembridge read them all into the record first.
Madam Chair, with your, my apologies, I need to recuse from the first three cases.
Okay, well, he's going to read them all, so I guess you, if it makes sense to recuse himself, that's fine. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we will begin with case BOA 1266730 with the address of 4 to 18 Cheney Street. Next, we have case BOA 1266736 with the address of 3 Scottlow Street. Then we have case BOA 1266732 with the address of 20 to 28 Cheney Street. Next, we have case BOA 10671117 with the address of 6 South Kelly Court. Then we have case BOA 1024095 with the address of 11 Fanyol Street. Then we have case BOA 818377 with the address of 111 Terrace Street. Next, we have case BOA 768729 with the address of 79 to 89 West Broadway. After that, we have case BOA 1295864 with the address of 6R Erickson Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1295771 with the address of 8R Erickson Street. And in addition to that, we have case BOA 1295867 with the address of 18R Erickson Street. And go. Next, we have case BOA 1295870 with the address of 20R Erickson Street. Then we have case BOA 9427901 with the address of 2 Starling Street. After that, we have case BOA 942824 with the address of 12 Tukon Road. And finally, for the extensions, we have case BOA 942825 with the address of 14 Tukon Road. And that is the extensions that we have for this morning.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the extensions as requested?
A motion to approve the extensions as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes, Madam Chair, just with the notice of recusing from the first three cases.
Okay. Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Betterbraza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
That will then take us to the board final arbiter hearing, scheduled for 9:30 a.m. The first case we have is case BOA 486152 with the address of 270 Dorchester Avenue. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the Board.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the project proponent. With me this morning as representatives of the proponent are Scott Aron and Mark Duffin and our architect Jim Ronestock from M.Bark. This is the building that is proposed to be constructed at the corner of Dorchester Ave. and B Street in South Boston, which is presently a large construction site, for those of you familiar with the location. It was originally approved as a 114-unit building by this Board in July of 2017, and the current extension is valid through July 14 of this year. Construction started in late 2019, consisting of demolition of the existing warehouse and industrial buildings at the site, and then construction ran straight into the COVID construction moratorium in March of 2020, and the excavation of the site for the garage came to a halt. There subsequently was a change in ownership. In 2022, there was another project proponent that advanced a notice of project change with the BPDA, but that was abandoned because of the then-interest rate hikes by the Fed during that time period. And that brings us to the current proposal, which is before you today, for board final arbiter review. In September of 2023, a notice of project change was filed with the BPDA, essentially seeking to build exactly the building that had been approved by the BPDA in this Board, but changing the programming from condominium to rental. We had a series of public meetings sponsored by the BPDA, and this project continues to have universal support in the neighborhood. The BPDA Board approved the notice of project change on December 14 of 2023, and the changes that were part of that approval, again, changing the 114 units from condo to rental, reduction of the parking, consistent with the South Boston Transportation Access Plan and the plan for Dorchester Ave, from 70 spaces in the underground garage to 20, and that is because of elimination of a full level of underground parking to make the project more economically feasible and to eliminate some of the construction difficulties, given that the site is directly above a red line tunnel. Another change was lowering the B Street Plaza Public Park to gray to make it a lot more accessible and pleasing as part of the public realm, moving the parking garage entrance from West 6th Street on the side of the building to the front of the building on B Street to enable some public realm improvements on West 6th Street. And the building envelope underwent a series of design changes as well, all of which were vetted with the BPDA staff, architects, and urban designers as part of the notice of project change process. What does not change about the building is the unit count, 114 units, the central building envelope, the fact that there are 20 IDP units, which is 17%, and that consists of 13% base IDP requirement plus 4% density bonus under plan Dorchester Ave for South Boston, pursuant to which this project has always been proposed. What also has not changed is 2,250 square feet of street-level commercial space for ultimate self-defense, which is a youth program in South Boston that was in one of the existing buildings, has temporarily moved to another location, but will come back to occupy that space at a below-market commercial rate. It's a super-popular program for youth in South Boston, and we're looking forward to having them back in the building. Public realm improvements, trees and sidewalks, bike storage, 416 bicycles, a Blue Bike station, and other mitigation as set forth in the BPDA memo approving the MPC. We submitted this package to ISD for the examiner review, and the conclusion, consistent with our request, is that no further or other zoning relief is necessary, that the notice of project change represents a slight reduction of the overall scale of the building, and the BPDA Board vote specifically found, excuse me, that the program revision described in the MPC do not significantly increase the potential impacts arising from the project located at 270 Dorchester Ave and are within the scope of required review and provide sufficient mitigation measures to minimize these impacts, and the BPDA waived further review of the project subject to continuing design review by BPDA. So the purpose of today's request of this Board is simply to conform the most recent set of plans submitted to ISD and reviewed by ISD to conform those plans to the zoning relief of this Board that is currently in place. With that, I'll ask for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lacass. Any questions from the Board?
I just have a question either to the BPDA project manager or to Mark in regards to the notice of project change. Did you hear any feedback from the public in regards to the reduction of parking?
Yes, not surprisingly, there was a split of opinion. The West Broadway Neighborhood Association was largely supportive of that. The BPDA urban planners were largely supportive of that because it's consistent with the most recent South Boston transportation plans, but not surprisingly, there were also some voices in the community that thought the reduction was too steep and that there ought to be a higher number. So we tried to strike a balance between all those competing interests and landed at 20 parking spaces with the elimination of one level, given that it's just basically a three-minute walk from the Broadway T Station, which has at least six bus lines in addition to the red line.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Mr. Langham? Okay, Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have our second board final arbiter case, that being case BOA 1433649 with the address of 554 to 562 Columbia Road. It's the applicant and/or their representative present who they explain to the Board for it.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Nick Suzola, McDermott, Kurt D., Miller, and Hanley, LLP here in Boston, zoning and permitting attorneys for the project. We did submit a presentation, Madam Chair, I don't know if Madam Ambassador is able to pull it up or not, but with me today, perfect, thank you. Next slide would be, there you go. Thank you, Madam Ambassador, or Mr. Ambassador if it were. With me today is Mike Rooney, project proponent from 554 Columbia Road LLC, and Jim Podeski, who's our architect from the architectural team. Next slide. This is just a summary of the changes. This project was originally approved by this Board in March of 2023, so a little bit over a year ago. It is an Article 80 Large Project Review project. These changes were approved by the BPDA Board in December for these changes under Article 80 Large Project Review. You could see a summary of these changes. It still remains 64, 65 units of all affordable housing. The main change here is this has now been change of programming to senior affordable housing, and with that, there's been a removal of the previously proposed 24 parking spaces under Article 80 Large Project Review. And with that, but with that, in response to those changes to remove those parking spaces, you'll see that we've added a drop-off pickup area specifically on-site on Arian Street, which is the side street off of Columbia Road. We've also widened Arian Street to 14 feet, whereas previously it was 11 feet. Also, to help with these drop-offs and pickups, we've improved indoor and outdoor amenities spaces, and the programming still remains to preserve the existing Fox Hall Building, which is on-site today. Next slide. And I'll move through these slides very quickly, Madam Chair, for this is the project site itself. It's about 20,000 square feet. It's in Uplands Corner, Dorchester neighborhood of Boston. The site is currently occupied by the four-story Fox Hall Building. You can see towards the front of the site on Columbia Road. There's also a very large surface parking area and kind of vacant area and garage to the rear, and it's at the corner of Columbia Road, and that's Arian Street to the south. You can see there as well. Next slide, please. Again, just existing conditions, you can see Fox Hall and the vast unimproved surface parking and garage to the rear of the site. Next slide, please. And this is just to show, so this is what was approved. You can see the building as approved here, and then we're going to juxtapose that against the next slide, if you could scroll down to show the proposed building on the next slide, and this is the proposed building in front of the Board today, and you can see there's a reduction in massing between the two buildings, the Fox Hall Building to remain and be renovated, and then the new addition of senior housing to the rear, the massing has been reduced, and instead of it being fully connected to Fox Hall, it's now connected by a two-story connector between the two buildings, which further breaks down massing, allows light, air, et cetera. And then you can start to see here in tan, kind of that jog-in where the pickup-drop-off area would be proposed, allowing direct access into the lobby and some open space as well for the senior program. Next slide, please. This is just another view from the rear. You can see down Arians, Arian Street again. You could see the plantings along Arian Street, the jog-in, and how it's widened to allow for better pickup and drop-off. Next slide, please. Another view, as you can see, it's not very visible behind Fox Hall from street level. You can see on the left, you can start to see the building as you move up Arian Street. Next slide. This slide is just a plot plan. It's just to show again the Board and everyone on the proposal for the connector and the new building that's pulled back off of the existing Fox Hall Building and the footprint of the proposed new building on the site. Next slide, please.
Do you want to pause here for a second to see if there are questions from the Board?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Sorry, I was just trying to be as efficient as possible, but we're happy to stop.
No worries. I mean, just to confirm, it seems like, you know, you're not exacerbating any of the conditions that we approved previously, correct? You're improving some and others remain the same, correct?
100% Madam Chair, and if the Madam Ambassador goes down a few slides, there is a chart, floor plans, keep going, keep going. Perfect, right here, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair. Specifically, to answer your question, there's no new zoning relief needed. There's a slight decrease in height, actually, and there's a drop in FAR by about 0.7 from 3.95 to 3.24, again, by regenerating kind of a connection between the two buildings. And then the, there is a reduction in parking because of the senior programming, but that is under Article 80 Large Project Review for off-street parking and loading, and we've tried to mitigate that by some of the programming and by also adding that off-street unloading on our own site on Arian Street. But to answer your direct question, yes.
Thank you. Other questions from the Board?
I guess my question is very similar to the previous proposal in regards to the notice of project change. What feedback did you receive from the community? And either the BPDA project manager can respond, but I would be curious to know how the community felt again with the reduction of parking from 24 to 0.
Yeah, I could answer that, Ms. Betterbraza. I don't see Stephen Harvey on, who's our project manager for this project, so I guess it will fall to me. If I may, I would like to just say ditto to what Attorney Lacass said. I think it was that the programming was the driver of this, no pun intended, that this was the reason behind the reduction in parking. I think if we were just doing affordable housing and remaining, that perhaps it wouldn't have been proposed as such, but the change to senior programming, the fact that we are around the corner from the Uplands Corner commuter rail stop, as well as all of the amenities and the buses on Columbia Road, was certainly a part of the discussion. I would reiterate what Attorney Lacass said in the previous matter, that there was, you know, some concern from folks in the neighborhood as to the parking, but I think we did our best to explain why we were doing it and why it's because of the programming. And then, of course, you know, I think obviously we got approval from the BPDA and from the, you know, the folks in planning for this change as well. So I would be remiss if we didn't say we didn't hear some concerns, but I do think that a lot of those concerns were related by the programming change as well to senior housing and the fact that it's all affordable in the location and a very walkable transit-oriented location.
Thank you for that response.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Betterbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to the groundwater conservation over in the district, scheduled for 9:30. And with that, we have case BOA 1573221 with the address of 281 to 283 Franklin Street. I also believe this is an Article 80 project, so if the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the Board for it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Mr. Stembridge is correct, this is an Article 80 matter. It is zoning compliant, it is here before the Board for G-Card approval only. I represent Boston Pinnacle Properties and its principal, Adam Burns. My client is proposing one of the first office-to-residential conversions in the downtown under the Downtown Residential Conversion Pilot Program. We've been working with the BPDA for a number of months. This project would see floors 2 through 6 of the six-story building located at 281-283 Franklin Street in the downtown converted from their present commercial use to 15 apartment units, nine studio units and 6-1 bedrooms. As part of the pilot program, 20%, I'm sorry, 17% of the units required is affordable. My client is proposing three IDP units for affordability component of 20% for this project. This is a zoning-compliant project. It is, it does require only G-Card permit. I believe that Mr. Semenelli can testify, will testify, that he has both letters. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Great, thank you. Is Mr. Semenelli on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the Board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Card letters from the applicant.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the Board? Okay, great. Well, I commend, I commend you for being one of the first, so good luck. Any question, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. At this time, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 hearing. Hearing none, then we'll go to the first case, which is case BOA 1565083 with the address of 144 Worcester Street. The applicant and/or their representative, I believe, Mr. Attorney Lacass, is present, would they explain to the Board?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Uh-oh, do you have two devices on?
Someone else does.
Okay, let's mute everyone else, please.
I think so. Are we okay now? Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant, who is also on the call today. Jas Bogle is the project proponent, and his project manager, Pavel Huns, and our architect, Pedro Lucas from Zephyr, will explain the floor plans. Now, before you on the screen is an image of the existing building. It's somewhat unusual for the typology of building. It's somewhat unusual for the typology of buildings. That end, excuse me. It's a large floor plate building, essentially two buildings, but it has always been somewhat larger multifamily building. Currently undergoing a gut renovation of the existing eight units, being completely reconfigured to create five larger family-sized units with the addition of an elevator to make the building fully accessible. At the rear of the building, we are infilling up to the line of the existing rear stairwell to create slight additional living area in each unit and adding rear decks, which are consistent with the decks similar to that in the south end. You'll note in the BPDAs recommendation that the decks are stated as being projecting nine feet from the rear facade, but it's been revised to six feet, consistent with the BPDAs design standards as part of the revised plans, which are on the screen before you today. Shown here on the site plan, you see at the rear along the passageway, there's an existing cinder block parking garage, excuse me, that is being demolished to create open space for parking at the rear of the building for five vehicles, consistent with five units, and a shed that's being removed as well. The proposal also includes installation of groundwater recharge system, as this is located in the groundwater conservation overlay district. And in terms of the zoning relief, I'll just highlight before I turn it over to Pedro Lucas to talk about the programming and the floor plans. Before you today are three conditional use permits, one being for G-Cod, one being for the extension of the, and you can see on the site plan there, that little bump out, that's the rear existing stairway, and the infill that's being proposed goes to the face of that. So that extension into the rear yard is a conditional use in the south end. The roof structure addition on the top to enclose the elevator and otherwise provide access to the roof deck is also a conditional use permit and subject to further review by the Southern Landmarks Commission, before whom we've appeared twice on an advisory basis and made revisions based upon their input. And lastly, the variance, there's a sole variance, and that is for an FAR increase based upon that small rear bump out on either side of the staircase, increasing the overall building FAR from 2.74 to 2.98, which is an 8% increase of the overall building square footage, and that being entirely at the rear of the building. So three conditional use permits and the one variance for FAR. And the BPDAs recommendation of approval notes that all revisions ought to be subject to review by the Southern Landmarks Commission, which, of course, we have to appear before them before any further approvals maybe had ISD. With that, I'll turn it over to Pedro Lucas to describe the floor plans and the design influence for the changes that are being made. Pedro.
Thanks, Mark. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Pedro Lucas with Zephyr Architects, address 315 A Street. As marked, as described, we're here seeking one variance for FAR and approval of conditional uses for a few things, to include rear decks and roof deck at 144 Worcester Street. Mark did a great job at summarizing this, so I might overlap some of the things he said here, but 144 Worcester Street is a full renovation of a double-wide groundstone. It's a conversion from eight units to five family-sized units. That is two duplexes, side-by-side at the Level 1 and garden level, and then three floor threes above that. If you could move to page nine, I'll highlight, next one, yeah. I will highlight here and give a brief overview of our variance. Our variance is FAR. Our existing building FAR is 2.74, and we are proposing 2.98, which is a total increase of .24. That's an 8% increase in FAR. The FAR increase is seen as the infill at the rear that you can see here on the plan, on the left side of the plan, above that square, gray square. That infill at the rear increases living space by roughly 120 square feet per floor. This infill aligns to an existing masonry tower and does not project beyond the existing rear yard setback set by the existing masonry tower. It does not project past the existing party wall with our neighbor to the north, 146 Worcester Street, which you can see represented as the gray line that the sort of plan north here. In addition to the infill, an increase in FAR is proposed to renew roof access. This roof access has been modified to be smaller after several advisory hearings with landmarks and meetings with the community. This roof access is now half the original proposed and is a total of 176 total square feet of usable space, in addition to housing, life safety, mechanical equipment for the building, circulation to the roof deck, and the elevator overrun. It conforms to the height requirements of the zoning ordinance and is comparable to the headhouse height found on our neighbor at 146 Worcester Street. If you could move to page 11, I think that would be more relevant for this section. We're also, as Mark said, seeking conditional use permits for roof deck and rear decks. A roof deck complies to all the setback requirements and was designed to not be visible from the street. The railing sit at a similar elevation to the existing masonry parapet between 144 and our neighbors at 146. We propose rear decks for levels 1 through 4 that bump out six feet from the infill and existing masonry tower. These roof decks wrap around the tower to connect back to the building. The six-foot deck is setback 41 feet 6 inches. And lastly, in addition to these items, I just wanted to summarize, we think that our project proposes significant improvements in the way of a full restoration of the existing masonry facade that has found itself in disrepair. It includes upgrades to life safety, including making a fully sprinkler building. Like Mark said, we are removing a two-car garage and storage shed at the rear yard to provide parking for all the proposed units. In contrast to the existing two parking spots for the eight units, we'll be providing five parking spots on permeable pavers at the rear, one for each unit. With this rear double-wide footprint, we can provide family-sized units served by an elevator, allowing for adaptable units that can be fully accessible if needed. We think we're proposing a unique product representative of a unique building. So we wanted to thank you for your time and consideration of this proposal. I'll send this back to Mark.
Thank you, Pedro. And Madam Chair, I believe that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Can you just clarify the roof deck from 9 to 6 feet? Was the 6 feet part of the community process, or is that a recent, a more recent adjustment?
So the adjustment from 9 to 6 relates to the rear decks?
Rear, sorry, rear decks.
Rear decks, yes. And the initial set of plans that was originally filed with ISD showed 9-foot decks, but we changed that to 6-foot, having in mind that the BPDAs designer use standard for such decks is no more than 6 feet. So the revised set of plans that are before you show 6 feet, and that's in response to just realizing that under the design standard, 6 is the standard, not 9, so we reduced them to 6.
Okay, I understand that part. I'm asking whether that was part of the community process. So there are a butter concerns, and I'm trying to understand if it was in relation to the original 9 or 6 or both.
No, during the community review process, actually, there was very little discussion about the decks, and we voluntarily made that change once we realized that 6, you know, 6 is the design standard for such rear decks in the south end. The changes that were made is a result of not only the community review process, but the advisory review process with landmarks, what relates to the addition on the roof to house the elevator overrun and to provide access to the roof deck. Those were the changes that were responsive to community concerns and Southern Landmarks' guidance and direction.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mark, I have a question regarding your penthouse kind of access to the deck. What was the feedback from Boston Landmark?
So we appeared before the Landmarks Commission twice on an advisory basis because we can't go to them for final approval until we've completed this process. And Pedro was responsive to the commission's comments and concerns about the shape of the penthouse, sloping the roof to make it not visible from the front of the building, reducing the size of it, pulling it back in various locations. So from the first advisory to the second advisory review hearing, a lot of changes were made, and I can fairly report that the second advisory review hearing was very positive in the sense that we got the distinct impression from Landmarks Commission that all of their concerns have been addressed, such that we should proceed to zoning and then come back to them after zoning for further design review of those changes. And Pedro, you want to?
Thank you. Thanks for that response. Yeah, typically, they have a lot of comments regarding the penthouse, but I think you just noted that it's really in regards to visibility from the street, so I'm glad that those got addressed. Thank you. No further questions.
And you'll note a BPDAs recommendation of approval, similar comments that the shape and size of the penthouse had been designed such that it was designed to minimize the visibility, which is always the goal, of course.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, ONS hosted a meeting on January 23rd. There were some concerns raised in that a butter's meeting, which the applicant sought to hold back the addition on the top of the building. We received one letter in support citing what they felt was an improvement upon the existing building, as well as the elevator providing disability access for tenants or for occupants, as well as moving the garage to increase useful space on the lot. We received six letters in opposition. I believe one is from the Claremont Neighborhood Association, which is the act of civic in this area. These letters mostly express concerns regarding what they felt was reduced housing yet increased size beyond zoning regulations. A lot of concerns related to the height, with fears that it'd be setting the precedent for the neighborhood, as well as shadows, and they felt that the building was jutting out onto the small residential street. With that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Landmark Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeekren, City Councilor, Aaron Murphy's office. Would like to go and recommend and support today. Thank you.
Who's our ambassador?
Madam Chair, there's like six right hands.
So I see a district.
Joy.
Yep, and I see some other office something. Okay.
unmute yourself as the honors of candidates.
Thank you to the chair and members of the board. My name is Joy Armogio, and I'm representing Councilor Frances Anderson. The councilor appreciates the opportunity to address the board regarding the development plans at 144 Worcester Street in the south end, and after carefully considering and reviewing community concerns, she cannot support this measure in its current form. The decision is based on multiple emails that our office received from the community around concerns with how the project would reduce housing units, does not align with zoning regulations, and would impact the physical visual cohesion of the neighborhoods. Furthermore, the community is requesting that developments uphold neighborhood values of maintaining affordable housing in new developments. This decision was not made lightly and is rooted in the councilor's commitment to ensuring responsible and sustainable developments that align with the best interests of the community. Thank you for your attention to this night.
Thank you. We can't hear you, Ms. Shimano. We can, I see your mouth moving, but we can't hear you. Is there, you want to keep going?
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you now. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Sorry about that. I'm Hero from Representative John Moran's office. He represents the南 district, which includes 144 Worcester Street. We submitted a letter from our office opposing the project. Unfortunately, while we appreciate the changes made to the roof structure and other parts of the building with the community process, we do stand with the butters and the Neighborhood Association mentioned previously, Claremont Neighborhood Association, who unanimously voted against the project, and thank you.
Madam Chair, we have four additional raise hands.
Yep, keep going.
Now, I'm going to unmute you.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Matt Wantsey, and I am here in two capacities.
Can you please state your address for the record, too?
Located at 146 Worcester Street.
Thank you.
So I directly abut, and as the trustee representing all owners of the building. And the reasons for opposing the project are directly outlined in the letter submitted by the CNA Claremont Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. Hi. The raise hands? Yep. Please call, Renee.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the board and Madam Chair. I'm here today representing Bob Barney, who's the president of the Claremont Neighborhood Association. He is unfortunately out with a family medical emergency and apologizes for his not being able to attend. I'm also a member of the board and have been participant in the butter meetings regarding 144 Worcester Street. And what has been said in terms of deferring to the letter, there is a letter that was sent on behalf of Claremont Neighborhood Association by Bob on April 4th. And just to top line it, there's, you know, we oppose the project for three key reasons. One is reduced housing yet increased size beyond zoning regulations. The other is opening the door for new opportunities for further developments, especially true for secondary south end streets like Worcester Street. And just to state also, we're not against roof decks and the appropriate access points, but are against the increased height here. And then director butter impact. So a lot of the director butters who may also be raising their hands around the call has expressed impact due to the sight lines based on the structure that is on the existing, the existing plans on the roofs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, see four more additional raise hands.
I'll take two more. I'll take two more.
I found D. Armando. Unmute you.
Hello.
Are you here?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Armando Hernandez from 298 Shamur Avenue. I've been a south end resident for 10 years, and I want to vote in support of this project. I drove by the site, the building is in disrepair. I think the changes are coherent to everything else we see in the neighborhood, and I think it's a great project. I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be approved.
Thank you.
And Thomas, unmute you.
Yeah. Hello, Thomas Callis. I am, I've been a south end resident for five years at 40 Hanson Street. I agree with the comment that I just heard. I feel like the project should be approved. The building is in disrepair. The units that are being proposed are family-sized units, which is coherent with a lot of what you see in the south end, and I believe it's a good development and an improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, can I ask, the height that folks are referencing is due to the roof deck, not any additional height to the building itself, the floors, correct?
That's right. The sole, but importantly, Madam Chair, height is not one of the grounds for zoning relief that we seek. The height maximum in this sub-district is 70 feet, and even with the addition being proposed at the modest size of 175 square feet, there is no height violation. It is less than 70 feet in height. So the height is consistent with what we're proposing, so too the multifamily residential use from 8 to 5. 5 is also multifamily residential use, and that is an allowed use, so we seek no zoning relief related to height. And of course, the constant trade-off that we hear about, you know, the desire for larger family-sized units, when you create larger units, of course, you're going to have fewer of them. That's just a function of, you know, that desire. There were 21 letters of support sent to this board, which I believe Stephanie has made part of the file. The MFR isn't allowed use, the height is less than 70, and again, the relief that we seek- which I believe Stephanie has made part of the file. The MFR isn't allowed use. The height is less than 70. And again, the relief that we seek are three use permits and the sole variance relates to the infill at the rear, which essentially received no, no comment or opposition and not being very modest at 8%.
Thank you. Yep. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this with, sorry, Landmarks Review and Boston Water's sewer review. I think that it's a reasonable proposal. I think that the issues that you're fighting are, as of right, the only one, like you said, the one that people have. Nobody has an issue with the one variance that you're seeking, so.
And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Broussard?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, Kylie Lane.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1563167 with the address of 647 Tremont Street. It's the applicant to handle their representative's present. Would you explain the case to the board?
Joe, I'm going to make you a panelist, okay?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe Consalvo, permit contractor for 647 Tremont Street. The project.
Did we lose Mr. Consalvo?
No, he just accepted to be a panelist, that's why.
Okay, all right. Thank you. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe Consalvo, permit contractor for the project at 647 Tremont Street. The existing space was formerly aptly named 647 Tremont Restaurant. Currently a vacant space, which we have permits to remodel the existing lower level and first floor of the space. Revised kitchen plan, upgraded MEPs, and also installing a second staircase in the rear. The former restaurant had additional seating at 645 Tremont Street, but when the subsequent closure, that wall was closed up. We are looking to transfer that seating to the lower level as shown on the plan. And the other variance requested was, excuse me, variance needed is parking. Obviously, the South End restaurant, that's not available.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. We hosted a Butters meeting where reportedly no residents were in attendance. The applicant then went on to get in touch with the Pilot Block Neighborhood Association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time, but that would like to first look forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Minor, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, my lady and boss. Madam Chair, members of the board. This is minor for representing Contras Union Carpenters and they will work through. Boston, I want to go and recommend support of this project.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to propose a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Sorry, I take one.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Lady.
Was it, yes, it's just, okay, thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Broussard?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
You're also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA 1505167 with the address of 847 East Fifth Street. It's the applicant to handle their representative's present. Would they explain the case to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier. I'm an attorney with the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury. I'm joined today by Chris Drew from The Architect, from 686 Architect. I'm also joined by James McClure, who's the owner, applicant and would-be developer of this property. So I'm just going to give this board a brief overview of the project and some of the zoning matters that are implicated before I turn it over to Mr. Drew to discuss the floor plans and architectural design. This project, if we can maybe go to the second page, please? Yep, thank you so much. Just to give a little neighborhood context, 847 East Fifth Street is located in the City Point neighborhood in South Boston, just one and a half blocks away from the water. This gives you an idea of the block where it's located. And as you can see, it's an existing state. There's a fair amount of open space on that lot. And the lot really, it's two separate parcels, but in joint ownership, so considered a single lot for zoning purposes. And if we can go to the next page, page three, please? And the summary is that we're seeking to, the proposal is to redevelop that existing home that you see there. That's a two-family home and to redevelop it into a five-family home by adding an addition to the left and also to the rear. We're utilizing 6,250 square feet of lot space. Again, that's comprised of two separate parcels. And for a zoning overview, we are not seeking any variances. So it's from a dimensional perspective, it's compliant. If we can go to the next slide, please, page four? So the zoning relief we're seeking is in the form of two conditional use permits only. The first is because it's a GPOD requirement. As you can see on the left side there, the property is not almost completely within the GPOD along Dave Boulevard. There's a small portion of the front that falls outside of that 500-foot zone. And because the end product here exceeds 5,000 square feet, GPOD is applicable. This would require us to also present this matter to Boston Parks for review and then further BPDA design review. It is worth noting that the BPDA does approve or recommends approval of this project in its current form. The second conditional use requirement is related to Article 68-29 of the code, which is the roof structure restriction. Now, the specific portion of the roof structure restriction that's requiring us to seek the conditional use relief is because we, the design is altering the existing roof profile. So as you can see there on the right, because it's an ALT, we're adding an addition on to what currently exists, we are changing that roof. So any addition to this project would essentially alter that roof profile, therefore triggering the conditional use requirement of Article 68-29. All right, just one more, please. Regarding the zoning, as I mentioned, that we don't need, I think it's proper to place this into context when considering the proposal. The FAR required, allowed in this area is 2.0. That would allow for 12,000 square feet, 12,500 square feet of design here. But what we're proposing is an FAR of 1.31 with 7,818 square feet. So we're essentially leaving 4,682 square feet of allowable space on the cutter room floor. And I think it's also worth noting that this project has changed throughout the community process and during that process, we ultimately reduced the overall square footage by 1,162 to get us where we're at right now with 7,800 square feet. Regarding off-street parking, it's also compliant. That is an issue commonly raised in this area because on-street parking is a problem. So we're compliant and we did reach that compliance after a community process when we initially did not have enough off-street parking to satisfy the code. We now do have seven off-street parking spaces to the rear. We're also open space compliant. Required would be 1,000 square feet. We have 1,126 square feet of open space. But importantly, 770 square feet of that open space is considered green space. And again, through the community process, this was an issue that was raised. So we were able to kind of redesign to add 104 square feet, additional square feet of green space to reach that 770 green space that we currently have. Regarding height, the base code in this area is 40 feet, but due to the roof structure restriction, another provision of that article, we have to, the height is capped at what exists on the lot. So we're at 33 feet 10 inches. That's to mirror the height and become, you know, height, reach that conformity with the existing height for that. And again, that was something that resulted as this project changed from its initial conception, where originally the addition to the left was going to exceed the height of the existing building, but we brought that down to 33 feet 10 inches. So that's almost, you know, a little more than six feet below the base height code. And in fact, I know this is a big jump, but if you can go to page 14, I just want to add, I just want to add a little bit of visual to the height with respect to its neighbors. As you can see, the overall height of this project is fairly well below the budding left and right buildings. Setbacks are compliant. The right side, it is a three-foot setback. We're at 3.9 on the left. Right side is existing, what's there. It's non-compliant, but existing. But we were mindful for the rear addition and pushed that off nine feet, so we're not approaching too far onto the right side. So I'd say from a zoning perspective, Mr. Drew did a great job of being mindful of not adding the density and massing. That would be problematic to the neighbors and the neighborhood. And the lack of zoning violations here reflects that design. And finally, just a little bit of public outreach and then Chris will get into the details. But the goal, if we can go to slide five, please, Madam Ambassador? Again, our goal is to eliminate violations and try to make this project work as well as it can in that area. The project, when we first started, we received a refusal letter that included eight violations. We didn't even take that to the community. We made a decision with the development team. We got to rework that project, which resulted in, you know, amended plans that resulted in only three violations. We took that project to the community, made a number of changes based upon feedback and now we've resulted what we have here, just the two conditional use requirements. Mr. McClure conducted two unofficial site walks with the Butters on the property. We had two ONS of Butters meetings and a CPNA meeting. And the big changes that resulted that I haven't really mentioned with, through the community process, was the height conformity with both, you know, with the addition, removal of decks over living space, which would have triggered lower roof deck violations. We've increased the off-street parking for compliance. We removed a side deck that was facing the right side neighbors. We reduced the rear second-story deck and we removed windows along right and left side elevations in response to some of the community concerns. We certainly weren't able to address all of the issues raised by the, some of the Butters in the neighborhood, but I think we did a really good job addressing most. So of course, I'll answer any more questions, but I'd like to turn it over to the architect, Chris Drew, to talk through the plans and design.
May I ask a question on parking?
Sure.
What's the current parking? Is there any?
Well, there is because if you, maybe if we can go to even page one, the first page. Right now, so that's the home and Mr. McClure actually redesigned, you know, completely renovated this home after he purchased the property in 2020. But as you can see, to the left, there is sufficient off-street parking to driveway. But that is the, that's technically a separate parcel. And again, that's the parcel we're seeking to activate with this addition. So the parking will, is all going to be in the rear accessible through a drive-down ramp on the left side addition. Again, I'll leave that to Chris.
And how many parking spaces exist currently?
There's existing three-party garage in the rear, which you can see on the aerial, which would be demolished. And then the rest is pretty much paved. One thing that I actually wanted to, you know, really emphasize was, you know, the existing green space, if you will, that's on the property is about 600 square feet, just a little over 600. We're actually increasing that, you know, to the 770, which is the board. Yes, the building is getting bigger, but we're actually getting rid of pavements or increasing the green space itself as well as open space. So I guess at this point, if we can jump down to slide seven, please? So again, this is just the landscape plan. So again, what we're counting in the green space area is in that red box in the upper right corner there. And then, you know, we've got the, we've got five parking spaces that are basically underneath the building and then two to the rear that are kind of like outside of the building. But then it's like an open, open-air parking area, if you will. There'll be access from a garage door off of East Fifth Street. Next slide, please? So again, the technical estate plan parking on the right and the first floor on the left. So again, the unit in blue, unit one is the existing building, is the existing unit itself, which is a three-bedroom, about 180 square foot unit. Unit two is behind that, which is the yellow unit, which will be a one-bedroom at about 795 square feet. And then the unit three to the left, which is the orange, which is another two-bedroom unit that's about 954 square feet. Next slide, please? So then again, on the second floor, we've got the unit in the front, which is unit one, which is a bi-level unit, in part of that. Then we've got unit four, which is in the back, which is 1,390 square feet, which is another three-bedroom unit. And then we have unit five, which is in the lower left corner, which is another five-level unit, which is a two-bedroom unit of literally over 1,400 square feet. Next slide, please? You know, it's just the roof deck. Next slide, please? So the front elevation is seen along East Fifth Street and then the right-side elevation, as you can see, you know, we removed from the side elevation pretty much all the windows and stuff. And that was due to, you know, community feedback and concern. And you can see the open-air parking at the rear of elevation two. Next slide, please? So again, the rear elevation is at the bottom, which we have, all the, any deck will have glass railing, keep them transparent so that nothing's walking. Pretty much all the windows and doors and stuff are along the rear elevation. And then left-side elevation, we have four windows which we used in there off the bedrooms, but everything else is pretty much able to get rid of to minimize glass and privacy and all that stuff for Butters and neighbors. Next slide, please? Again, this is just a rendering looking at the proposed project. Again, a proposed addition on the left, existing on the right. Next slide, please? Again, just looking back. The proposed addition on the left, existing on the right. Next slide, please? They just kind of do the backyard, so again, you can see the way those decks are done. So that way, you know, each of the rear units gets a little private deck space as well as a nice green space, true green space in the backyard. Next slide, please? I think that might be it.
Oh, can you, can you go back to that slide? Sorry. On your site plan, you're showing five spaces, exterior parking spaces. But two, but three of those are kind of covered, covered, is that correct?
Correct.
By the deck?
Yes, by the deck and the building itself.
All right, thanks.
And of course, we have the two parking spaces kind of here in the bottom left-hand corner.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
I don't, I mean, I don't have questions, but I have comments.
Okay, Ms. Better Broussard?
So I'm just looking at the kind of the topology of the street and, I mean, you can see it here in terms of the contradictions of the massing, right? So you have some really nice triple-deckers, you have some manzarees and just the topology that is being that is being proposed with a front driveway, you don't really see that. You either see open outdoor kind of off-street parking on the property or you don't really have kind of a covered parking spaces. And then in the front, so in the front, the typology is, you know, these two gable roofs, it seems like it's a very kind of suburban typology to bring here. And in terms of the density of the unit, you know, it's making the applicant add seven, one, two, you know, three, four, seven parking spaces, which I just seen, it feels like a lot to cars. That's just kind of, that's just my comment.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Here are none, let's take public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. So 847 East Fifth has gone through an extensive community process, as you heard from the applicant's representation. There were two ONS Butters meetings, the first October 25th, 2023, the second November 29th, 2023. I also understand that the proponent has hosted site walks with the Butters, most recently on January 2nd, 2024. The proponent presented their plans before the City Point Neighborhood Association on January 10th of 2024. There has been changes made throughout this community process after receiving community feedback. Since October of 2023, our office has received 46 letters in opposition on behalf of 48 individuals. We understand that we've also, the Zoning Board of Appeals has directly received scores more of letters in opposition as well. One of those letters that we did receive was the City Point Neighborhood Association, which submitted their letter of opposition in record to the proposal. The main concerns outlined are specific zoning where they're being sought, preservation of green space, also involving the side yard setback, and concerns over new constructions' proximity to abutting properties, the proposed parking configuration in relation to maneuverability and safety, impacts on a Butters' quality of life, such as sunlight, airflow, privacy, and also concerns were raised about the lack of design consistency with other lots that are on this block featuring large yards and different architecture. There's also concerns expressed over the building density as well as being proposed with a number of bedrooms, as well as its relation to other issues in South Boston regarding other developments. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sorry.
Do we have other raised hands?
Four raised hands, Madam Chair, but on you, Brian first.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Brian Schultz. Can you all hear me? I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I am, my name is Brian Schultz. I live at 851 East Fifth Street, which is the property directing, directly abutting, 847 to the left of it, if you were, if you were in front of it. I live in the second unit with my wife and two children. My parents live on the third floor and they are the owners of all three units at 851, and I'll be speaking on their behalf as well as on behalf of my family. I don't know if it's possible, but would Madam Ambassador be able to go to page 15 on those plans that we just reviewed?
Hi, can you guys hear me? Sorry.
Sorry, we have someone speaking already, Laura, if you could wait.
Of course.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm just going to try to keep this as brief as possible because I know that there's some people who want to talk about comments. So if we're looking at this now, our property is on, facing it from the back, we're on the right side. And as you can see right now, our units are losing about 70% of our sunlight due to this rather large wall being built three feet off of our property. We only have windows, a few windows in the back, a few windows in the front, not on the other side because it's a split six and that's where the firewall is. So all of our sunlight comes in through the windows on the west side, which is right next to 847. So hopefully that will be taken into consideration. Obviously, we feel that there's a quality of life, quality of life issue there. I'd also like to bring up that in 2020, the proponent brought forth, it was a different set of plans, but in 2020, they brought forth a set of plans for a four-unit condominium complex. And their violations were Article 68, Section 29, Article 29, Section 4, which are the exact same violations they have now. The board in 2020 denied their permits in 2020 due to the fact that they did not meet all of the conditions that are required for the board to issue a conditional permit. I'm not obviously going to go through all the conditions. I'm just, the board office knows what the conditions are. I'm sorry?
Please wrap up, we have other reasons.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay. And I'm just trying to do it as quickly as possible. And also, there's some concerns about the parking. I'm not quite sure how those cars can kind of maneuver in the back. It seemed a little complex and dysfunctional. And then my other question is, which I'm a little confused about, it seems that according to the assessor's office, and I checked this as recently as this morning, the two parcels are actually owned by two different parties. There's one that's owned by 847 East Fifth Street LLC, and then the parcel that's closest to us is owned by Marion and Peter Walsh. So it's the parcels, I understand they're on one lot, but the parcels themselves are listed under two different ownership parties according to the assessor's office.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Hi, thank you. I want to go on the record of opposing this project, and I know it's passed, but there was the one from earlier that we spoke incorrectly, 144 Worcester Street. There was miscommunication from my office and I did want to, if I could switch the record, to be opposing it. I know it's passed. I'm not sure if you can change my vote on that, even though it has gone through the process of being voted and passed, but I wanted to hop on and say that in person, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Counselor Flynn's office?
Hi, I'm sorry about that. I had a call and I was trying to decline the call and I ended up closing the Zoom. I'm sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I will read the letter of opposition from Counselor Flynn. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeal, I'm writing in opposition of the proposed project 847 East Fifth Street, which proposes to combine two parcels into one and change the occupancy from two, from a two to a five-family structure with a new construction of an addition on the left side and the rear of the building, which includes new parking spaces at the rear. My office has reviewed, has received an overwhelming opposition with 64 letters from neighbors as well as opposition from the City Point Neighborhood Association due to concerns on density, traffic, blocking of sunlight, reduction of outdoor space, and other negative impacts on quality of life. Neighbors have expressed their opposition based on the size of this project and how this proposed building will be disrupted to A Butters. This building will be blocking sunlight and impacting airflow, and it will cause a decrease in open space for families and children who currently have back jars filled with sunlight to play in. Moreover, neighbors are concerned that the parking configuration will make it difficult for cars to maneuver into parking spaces. They're currently not turning radius for parked cars, meaning cars will be backing out while others might be driving in at the same time, making it unsafe for pedestrians and children playing next door. There are also five parking spots facing directly into an A Butters yard, and it will make it unsafe for the children and pets to play with the cars entering and exiting. This is the second time that the proponent has come before CVA for this site and he was denied without prejudice last time. Many feel that this proposal lacks consideration for neighborhood characteristics or for quality of life for its neighbors. There are serious and legitimate concerns with this project that have been expressed by the A Butters and neighbors have voiced a strong opposition to this project. I hope that the CVA will take the concerns of my neighbors and I seriously and the nice honor relief for this project. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at at flynn@boston.gov or 617-635-3203. Thank you, guys.
Madam Chair, I have three additional raised hands. Okay, please proceed. And please be brief and bring new information.
Monica, I'm going to unmute you.
Hello, thank you for hearing from me today. My name is Monica Santos and I am also a direct abutter to this property residing at 845 East Fifth Street in South Boston. I represent myself as well as all direct abutters at 845 East Fifth Street in opposition to this project. For all of the comments already stated, the negative impact on our quality of life as a Butters, I do think it's important to note that the existing home on the property that is grandfathered in does have no side yard setback. So adding this addition on top of the existing home is even more imposing to us as a Butters at 845 East Fifth Street. A shadow study was also conducted. It appears the developers and their attorney did not submit the shadow study or we did not get a chance to review it, but the shadow study does show significant impact on our quality of life in terms of the loss of light and airflow, which will of course be an additional financial hardship for us in terms of increased electrical and heating costs, as well as just the general quality of life implications with our sunlight, airflow, and views all being significantly impacted. As was also just briefly mentioned, there are significant concerns about the parking configuration. Those seven spots do not appear to have a turning radius, so those spots, those parkers will have to be pulling out of a long driveway backwards. And again, there's five parking spots that are facing directly into our yard at 845 East Fifth Street, where again, we have young children and pets playing every single day. And one other point I would just add, particularly for us on the 845 side, so we have literally been living between two construction zones for years now. 843 East Fifth Street has also been undergoing construction for years that we've been living between this prop.
Understood. Just focus on this and wrap up. I know we have other raised hands, thank you.
And then this property, 847, was gut renovated a few years ago, and then of course, it'd be potentially this renovation happening as well. And then my final point and my discussions with the CVA, they have 84 letters of opposition on file. And as already mentioned, the City Point Neighborhood Association, these plans were presented there as well, and that was also unanimously proposed with over 20 members in attendance as well. So we would respectfully ask that the board denies these plans today and allows us to continue to work with the developers on a more suitable situation for all parties involved.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Madam Chair, I'm going to continue.
You said there were two more raised hands. Please stay brief and just state your opposition or support. Thank you.
I'm going to unmute you.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am a direct abutter also at 845 East Fifth Street. I appreciate the time and we'll certainly keep this brief. I would just express my opposition and agree with everything that Monica and Brian have stated previously. My wife and I, Mary Lee, live next door to this development with our young son and have significant concerns for all the reasons stated, particularly around the parking issues, the violations, the open space. So we stand opposed as well and appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Will Lillian go to unmute you?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Lillian, Connor.
Presenting to the City Point Neighborhood Association. They did come before the association and it was voted to oppose. The membership has many concerns of which you've heard already today. So to get straight to the point, absolute opposition. We ask that you do not grant the conditional use permits, and we also ask that you do not approve with BPDA design review because we all know that they cannot shave off square footage. It's like putting a square into a round peg right now insofar as the space that, please do take a look at the parking. And at this point, we oppose it for quality of life issues and we see no reason to impede the neighborhood based on pure profit luxury condos. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I do have some questions and I'm not sure if, maybe the lawyer can answer. Many of the abutting properties are kind of these triple-decker typologies and it seems like there's no parking on the property. Where do these residents park? And they're multifamily.
Are you talking about the, I'm sorry, are you talking about the abutting residents and where they park?
The abutting residents. So we heard from 845, I don't, you know, I don't see off-street parking. The property, 851, 853, they are multifamily, very similar lot dimensions. Where do they park? There's no parking on the lot.
Well, I can only assume that they're maybe conducting street parking, but that's why we were very mindful to actually, we wanted to, we didn't want to add to that, which is why we designed this for seven off-street parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding correctly that a lot of the triple-deckers on this site, abutting property does not have onsite parking. So thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant. So I'm looking at the basement plan and the trash room and bike room are, you know, all within that space. However, it looks like they're only accessible by stairs. Can you confirm that and can you take me through how trash would work on this site, you know, for these five units? Will it be private pickup? Are they expected to take out the bins?
The residents will take out the bins themselves.
Up the stairs or down? But they would need to use the stairs to do that?
Yes, there's one, there's one stair, correct.
Okay, thank you. I also want to echo Ms. Bede-Raza's concerns about the parking and just add, you know, that parking in the back is pretty narrow at seven and a half feet with the column. I do have concerns about that right there.
That is, you know, standard parking spaces, eight, six by four, and of course, half of them tend to compact it, you know, seven, six by eighteen. We did, we did do some bolt-on ahead of time. We did discuss this with Bautismo, who really didn't, didn't seem to have an issue with it, obviously. You know, this is approved, we're more than happy to what's approved with Bautismo to make sure that everything is satisfied.
And also, just to mention, in its recommendation of approval, the BPDA did focus its designer view to really closely look at parking as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one small question. As far as the parking goes, all the cars will have to back out, right?
No, that's incorrect. So the tightest space behind is about 21 foot seven and the widest is about 20, almost 23 feet behind. 20 feet is the minimum required, so we do exceed that slightly. But no, there would be enough one to do a three-point turn. It was in, you know, the drive-in and then be able to do a three-point turn to get out.
Okay, thank you. Here, if there are no further questions, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I don't have an issue with the density in terms of five units. I think there are typologies in here that allows that type of density. I think what's not in character with the neighborhood is the actual massing of the propose, of the proposal. So I'm going to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice. And again, we also heard a lot of community opposition for the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, I think this needs a little more work. I'd like to see less parking and more open space and just improved operations of the site, especially around that trash area.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ace BOA 1549728 with the address of 88 G Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board?
Laura is going to make your panelists.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. Our name is Laura in Clifford, Washington. We live at 88 G Street, Unit 3. Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for meeting with us to discuss our proposal to expand our existing roof deck on our top rubber roof. We've lived at 88 G Street, Unit 3, for almost 12 years. We adore our neighbors and the neighborhood and we do our best to keep it safe, friendly, and beautiful. We take pride in caring for the flower beds by the trees. On G Street, we plan cleanup days with our neighbors and alternate hosting many group barbecues. We've never held large parties or played loud music. Both my husband Cliff and I work from home and we try to enjoy our deck for about 10 months of the year if we can. We grow many containers of herbs. herbs, vegetables, and flowers, then we set up our offices outside in the sun. This proposed increase would greatly enhance our living and working spaces. We have proposed to expand our existing 14 by 18 square roof deck to 18 by 20 square feet, expanding our space roughly 100 square feet. This proposal only increases on two sides of our existing space, still allowing for ample safety spaces on all edges. Our proposed expansion will not be noticeable to anyone from the street level and will be no longer than the existing roof deck next door. For the Butters' meeting, we invested much time in passing out hundreds of leaflets, meeting individually, and talking to both direct Butters and community neighbors. Everyone was very open, inquisitive, and positive. We understand we have several letters of support with no written letters of opposition, something we do, we take very seriously and not lightly and are very grateful for. We're here to answer any questions you might have, and our contractor is waiting by the phone to answer any questions we cannot answer ourselves. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An Butters' meeting was hosted for 88 G Street on February 1st, 2024. Our office received nine letters of support on behalf of 12 individuals, the majority of which are direct Butters. We have received no letters of opposition. A Butters who support this proposal mentioned that the Watkins are exemplary neighbors who have problems to their property that the neighborhood appreciates. The personal outreach by proponents to share their plans and answer questions was appreciated. Lastly, letters of support note the affirmation that the roof deck space will be used as an outdoor living space and support the enhancement for the enjoyment of the proponents. At this time, our office is unaware of any additional concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura from Counselor's Office. Counselor would like to go on record in opposition due to his consistent and longstanding policy against new roof decks and expansions. His policy follows years of complaints from neighbors, our seniors, persons with disabilities, and young families about quality of life issues emanating from roof decks in the form of loud parties, disturbances at all hours, and trash removal issues. Moreover, additional roof decks and expansions will not contribute to an easing, to easing the serious affordable housing crisis, and it is difficult to understand a hardship will require sonar relief. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I make a motion for a tougher law.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case POA, case BOA. Forgive, Madam Chair, but we have-
Do the 11 o'clock?
11 o'clock. With that, as Madam Chair suggested, we'll ask for, since we're past the 11 o'clock hour, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from 11 o'clock. Hearing none, then we'll return to case BOA 1542408 with the address of 27 to 29 Kennerworth Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board please?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Evan Smith. I am the owner of 27-29 Kennerworth Street. I would first like to start by saying that I have had a number of community meetings and Butters' meetings regarding this project, and this project was very much designed with staying consistent with one is already present on the block that is founded by Dudley and Kennerworth, and much attention has been paid to informing with that, with that typology. As you can see, this is a corner lot where Dudley and Kennerworth Streets create a fourth. It is a bit of an oblique lot, just over 2,000 square feet. The building that is directly abutting is not occupied at this time. I am proposing to develop the empty lot on the corner. Next slide please. As part of this development, we can come back to this later, I am proposing to work with Boston Transportation and rework the intersection on the left. Right now, the intersection is a suit of asphalt with no apparent crosswalks, no seating area, no gridery. I am proposing to add that in as part of the project, as community benefit, and I receive general good support from the community for that part of the project. Next slide. This is the first level. This is actually more or less a sublevel. It's below grade. Trying to add some store into the units along with communal space that can be used by each of the units. Next slide. So on this floor plan, I am proposing nine units total on three stories. Listening to what the community organization has asked while in the years, there's been a strong push for a range of affordability in terms of unit size and unit typology. You know, we're looking for, I think the community generally looks for price point as well as scale. So this floor plan has one bedroom units, two bedroom units, and three bedroom units. So on each floor, floor plate, we have one one-bed, one two-bed, and one three-bed. Gives us a range of pricing and a range of entry points to this unit, to these units. As you can also see, in keeping with 98% of buildings on this block, it has a zero-foot setback along the sidewalk on both sides. If we were to look further down the street, the rest of the street is bounded by brick townhouses that are row houses, three-story with a half-level below that, but directly to the sidewalk with zero-foot setbacks. So this building maintains that same typology. Next slide. Next floor has the same layout. Next slide. Next floor has the same layout. There is a half-story and a roof that has a peak to it. The goal here is to provide one to mezzanine space for the upper units to make the unit slightly larger and also enclose the mechanical spaces so that they are not exposed on the roof. The private roof deck that we've seen is going to be removed from this plan based on community input on the community meetings. So that private roof deck will not be affirmed. Next slide. It's just a roof line. Next slide. So this is the base of the building. We still have a process ongoing with the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District, which will continue to provide input on the design of the facades and BPDA design overview as well. So we're expecting to continue to work on the facades in conjunction with landmarks and BPDA. Next slide. End view. It's a simple building, single entry. This building will be built to pass house standards in keeping with sustainability goals within Boston. It will also involve more than 50% minority contractors in keeping with community guidelines. There, I will lastly say, there, I think that's it for my presentation. I will lastly say, there has been some fairly vocal opposition by one or two of the direct Butters related to the unit count. There's been a spirited conversation regarding whether there should be more or less units. I have brought the larger unit count project. The opposition does not seem to be to the massing of the property so much as the unit count itself. And as others have mentioned in previous presentations, if we combine units, we end up with larger units at higher price points, which seems to go against the overall push by the community to try to reduce price points and create better entry points for potential homeowners. So while this could have fewer units, I have, you know, gone towards creating a range of unit scales to help those price points. With that, I'll end it over.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Smith, during your presentation, you mentioned that the community has been asking for affordability. Are there any of the units affordable, or how do you measure affordability here?
This is a solely market rate project due to the economics of both billing costs and the cost for the site itself. Affordability, I think, is more than just whether it's deemed affordable or not. It's what the total sticker price is for a unit. So if these were to be, you know, three-bedroom family units, they would probably start somewhere between $800,000 and $1 million, based on current market conditions. By offering one and two-bedroom units, we're able to offer units that start in the $400,000 to $500,000 range, which I think for those people that make too much money to afford, you know, an affordable unit, but too little to pay $1 million for a three-bedroom unit, this provides a homeownership opportunity that currently does not exist. And it's worth noting, these are also Converse. I have no interest in in breaking these limitations.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify that the BPDA has clear guidelines. Guidelines about what is affordable or not. So this is not affordable. This is market rate?
No, no, it's not BPDA affordable, but we're trying to reach a price point, let's call it a price point, that is lower than, you know, some other available market rate units in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bede Barazza, did you have a question?
No, it's the same question that Jawani had. So it was answered.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Asha with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. 27 to 28 Kennerworth has completed community process through our office. We did an Butters' meeting December 19, and the proponent presented before the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition on March 12. Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition voted against this development. Immediate Butters were also opposed to this development. The units are too small, lack of affordable units, and residents stated that the owners' plans are not well put out when it comes to getting clear answers. Our office would like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jawan? Jawan Skeens, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jawan Skeens. I am a lifelong resident at 44 Corbett Street in Dorchester, but I am also a lifelong member of Christ and Mature Church of Personal Experience, which abuts the property. I am currently opposed to this project and would like to seek a deferral for more community input at this time. Our church was not notified about any meetings related to Butters', Butters' meetings for us to give input for what this project could be. So I would just have to ask for a deferral at this time.
Thank you. Judith?
Yes, this is Pastor Williams calling. I'm actually using my CFO Zoom line of my church. I just wanted to know, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Okay, yes. I just wanted to say, yeah, this is Pastor Williams calling from Holy Chapel Church. I'm utilizing actually my CFO Zoom line, Judith Page. She's my assistant pastor as well. But again, our church was not notified about any meetings, community meetings, or anything else as well. We actually are close to the project as well. We're actually on the corner of Lambert and Bartlett, which is right around the corner from Kennerworth Street. And we actually have a path from our church that goes from behind our church that goes actually out to Kennerworth Street. So we're wondering in regards to that with the project that we're dealing with across the street on Washington, the Bartlett Yard Project, which of course is in full swing, and there have been some things there that have taken place that have caused some disruption with us getting into our parking spaces and so forth of our church. So I'm just wondering, is there going to be any more community response or any more community involvement in regards to maybe notification about how this project's going to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. I am here on behalf of the owner of 51 Dudley Street, the direct Butter named Leroy Alexander. Leroy recently purchased this property, property, and Evan was able to meet with him a few weeks ago to fully discuss the plans. He was very honest in his experience with the neighborhood, just as he was during his presentation. The owner of 51 Dudley Street, which is the direct Butter, is in complete support of this project.
Okay, thank you. And then there's a caller on 617212. I sent a request to unmute you. You're looking to give testimony here. You can press star. Oh, yep, there you go. Are you looking to give testimony here?
I am.
Can you say your name?
My name is Frank Reed, R-E-D-D, for the record. I live at 21 Kennerworth Street, Roxton. I'm a direct Butter. We have had several, several, several meetings with Mr. Smith, and all of them, he says he's going to come back with changes, and he doesn't. In each meeting he comes, he's, he's ill-prepared. One of the things we were concerned about is when he was with Mr. Dubois, who are his partner, they agreed to cut the units to eight units. Mr. Dubois transferred from him and he made his four. So I thought Mr. Smith was going to do four as well, and he keeps saying he was, he'll, you know, he doesn't say yes or no. He's going to get back to us, and he hasn't gotten back to us yet, but he's been moving forward with this plan. Although we keep trying to work with him, he's not been upfront about working with us. Secondly, we're not concerned about, you know, the price point because, you know, it's, it's market anyway. So that's a moot point with us. But we are concerned with some of the things. The lot is too small for that many units, and he's thinking that the city's going to come in and help him with those plans, but that doesn't seem likely because most of the things that he's presenting are just, it's open-ended. There's nothing firm there. So I am totally against this project.
Thank you. No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Well, can the applicant just speak to the, the community process again? It seems like some folks were communicated with, some others may not have been. So just to clarify before we proceed.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify. I've held at least seven community meetings with both Butters, Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition, and John Elliott Square Neighborhood Association. I've been very clear on my intent to build nine units on this for quite a while. We've had conversations regarding what it would look like to do a smaller number of units. And again, you know, it's come down to the price point conversation. So just saying that I have not responded to the comments is disingenuous, and, you know, the Butters may not like my response, but I feel pretty strongly about, you know, trying to provide homeownership opportunities that have lower overall price points as opposed to just building very large units which very few people can afford. I feel pretty strongly about that, and that may not be what the direct Butters would like to hear, but, you know, we have different opinions.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Can we get either ONS to respond, or how many in opposition or in favor do we have on file? If that can just be reiterated. If that can just be reiterated.
Mr. Newman, or is someone else?
So for some reason, I didn't get actual oppositions. Like, it was only through the abutters meeting. I don't have an actual email account, but there hasn't been anybody that is siding with this project at all. Everybody is against it.
Say that again, can you repeat the last?
So majority of the immediate abutters that I've talked to and the neighborhood association, they're all opposed to this project, but I don't have an actual account.
The, I'd like to just add that the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition, which is a split vote, was roughly forty percent supporting, sixty percent opposed. It was not unanimous opposition, and nor are the direct of butters unanimous opposition. I believe that, you know, those opposed have louder voices in many of these meetings, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, this project is in, I mean, this is just comment, this project is in Newbin Square. You know, if one was to provide affordable housing, there's a way that we can ensure that some of the units will be sold at the affordable AMI price point that's been set. But one of the concerns I have is, because it's nine units, you know, you don't have that kind of criteria imposed, so what is to say that the project becomes more expensive and you need to sell these units at a much more luxury price? So, you know, that's just some of what I'm thinking about in terms of the neighborhood and the development that has been ongoing in Newbin Square. Just some comments.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion to deferral, just to allow for a little bit more community process to ensure that the church that is right next to it, that there's a little bit more conversation. That's the motion that I put forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better-Broaza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. President DeBerg?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Stenbridge.
A deferral date?
May twenty-first.
Deferral date of May twenty-first.
Mr. Smith, does it give enough time to loop back to the church, et cetera? Is Mr. Smith still on, the applicant? Yeah, I'm not sure he's still on, so if someone could reach out to him with that date, and if it does not work for him, to move it accordingly. Thank you, next case.
Next, we have two companion cases, first being case BOA one-five-six-one-eight-six-two with the address of three-fifty-three to three-fifty-nine Blue Hill Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA one-five-six-one-eight-six-three with the address of three-ninety-one to three-ninety-five Blue Hill Avenue. If the applicant and or the representative is present, will they explain to the board first?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on these two projects.
Thank you. So, good.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton with the business address of one-hundred Franklin Street. With me this morning are Dwayne Boyce and Adler Bernadine from Norfolk Design and Construction, Ali Silias from Studio Luz Architects, and Antonio Lee from the Mayor's Office of Housing. I'm here before you this morning for two companion cases, as read into the record, both of which are part of the Blue Hill Avenue Action Plan. The project includes developing two vacant lots into two mixed-use buildings, one at three-fifty-three dash three-fifty-nine Blue Hill Ave. and one at three-ninety-one dash three-ninety-five Blue Hill Ave. Three-fifty-three dash three-fifty-nine Blue Hill Ave. sits on the corner of Blue Hill Ave. and Intervale Street. We're seeking to erect a new three-story building with five affordable homeownership units and one retail space. The zoning district is an MFR district, and the lot size is just under four thousand square feet at three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet. The building will include a retail space and one residential unit on the ground level, and two residential units on both floors two and three. Overall, the project includes three two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units. Moving down the street about a block, on three-ninety-one dash three-ninety-five Blue Hill Ave. is located on the corner of Blue Hill and Brunswick Street. We're proposing to combine two existing vacant lots to create a three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two square foot lot and erect a new mixed-use four-story building with ten affordable homeownership units and one ground floor retail space. This zoning district is actually an MFR LS, and as mentioned, the lot size as proposed would be three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet. The layout of this building would include the retail space and one residential unit on the ground floor, and three residential units on floors two, three, and four. The project overall includes ten one-bedroom units. Both buildings will include a group-two unit, a century unit, and have solar-ready roofs. Both proposals are seeking similar relief for lot size, additional lot size per additional dwelling unit, floor area ratio, open space, dimensional relief from front side and rear yards, and parking and traffic visibility. The two different violations for each one, three-ninety-one dash three-ninety-five Blue Hill is seeking relief for height in terms of feet. We're proposing fifty-two feet where forty-five is allowed, however, we are in compliance with the four stories that's permitted in this district. And three-fifty-three dash three-fifty-nine Blue Hill Ave. is seeking a conditional use permit to allow for the proposed ground floor retail space. All these violations are aligned with many of the surrounding buildings and are aligned with the goals of the Blue Hill Avenue Action Plan as a whole. They did go through a full community process, meeting multiple times with direct of butters as well as the Intervale Normandy Residents Association, and we provided a update for the proposal as recently as last Thursday. With that, I'll happily pause and take any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Is there anyone from MOH?
Madam Chair, can I, I'm sorry, I do have a question. So I see for the three-fifty-three project, you are flagged for height and stories, was that, do you still need that, or was that a result of a revision? It didn't seem like you needed that relief.
I apologize, I'm actually not seeing that on my refusal letter. I'm not sure, was that in the advertisement? Perhaps it was just them.
Okay. I think it was in a material that we received, but, yeah, height excessive.
The allowed, the allowed height in this district is four stories, forty-five feet, and we're proposing a three-story building at forty-three feet six inches for three-fifty-three Blue Hill Ave., excuse me, so I imagine that might be an oversight.
And I'll add that the original plans that were submitted, there was a height variance requested, but we have since revised our plans to go down to a lower height at three-fifty-three Blue Hill Ave., so we will no longer need a height variance.
And then in the three-ninety-one project, is there an elevator in there, or is that not necessary?
An elevator is not currently necessary at that site.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Quick question, Madam Chair. What is the area of income for the condos?
So they'll be split between eighty percent AMI and a hundred percent AMI, so three-fifty-three is proposing the five units. We're proposing three at eighty percent AMI and two at one-hundred percent AMI, and then at three-ninety-one dash three-ninety-five, that'll be an even split between five and five. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, may I have public testimony? Someone else want? Yep, I see two raised hands, I wanted to give the opportunity for ONS to jump in there on. If not, I'll take it.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
I have technical difficulties. The board, sorry, this is the MOH project, they did go through the community process. They met with, I know for three-five-three, let me just double check, sorry, three-five-three, three-five-nine Blue Hill Ave., there was a conditional support. There has been a tree that has been, I guess, affecting the neighbor, so there's a tree that's impacting the house in the driveway, the house next door, and so I know the community has been having a concern about that, but I'll defer to the board.
Mike Coles?
My name is Michael Coles, co-director of Project Right, three-two-zero-eight, Blue Hill Avenue. We had several meetings regarding three-five-three, three-five-nine Blue Hill Avenue with the developer and with the city. While we may disagree a little bit with the city on their concept along the stretch of Blue Hill Avenue, the next, these two blocks that these projects are on are highly impactful in terms of public safety. We've worked with the developer, and we want to continue to work with the developer on three-fifty-three, three-fifty-nine Blue Hill Avenue as we go forward. They tried to make the design more reflective of the many two-family houses on that block of Intervale. They've kind of, they made some different changes, they scaled down the building, and we want to continue to work forward on this process. Clearly, the tree that's on their property is very impactful upon the neighbor in terms of the roots impacting the driving, foundation, and overall shadowing of the house, so we look forward to continuing to work with them on three-fifty-three, three-fifty-nine Blue Hill Avenue. Regarding the other project, we do want to continue to work on that. That block has significant public safety issues. The whole block is a contiguous buildings, which means that trash and other issues get dropped off on, both on the Intervale and Brunswick Street sites impacting neighbors, so we would like to work forward in terms of addressing the impact density on these projects. We've had good working relations with this developer on Holborn Street, and we look forward to continuing this process as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I have no additional raise, oh, one second, I'm sorry, Antonio, MOH, sending a request to unmute you, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Antonio Blaisch. I am a senior housing development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project, as mentioned, is an MOH land disposition project that NS Partners LLC will develop in the Roxbury neighborhood. This project has gone through an extensive community process and has the full support of MOH.
Thank you. And I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion. I think this is a good project. I really appreciate the creation of affordable homeownership opportunities as well, and I make a motion of approval with BPDA review, special attention to improving the open usable space for both projects.
All right, thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
As we have passed the eleven-thirty hour, we will ask if there are any in question for withdrawal for deferral at this point.
Mr. Stenbridge, I am on one-sixty-nine Maverick Street.
So that would be for case BOA one-four-seven-five-nine-five-three with the address of one-sixty-nine Maverick Street. Will you go ahead and explain it first?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, two-quaranty-five Severn Street in East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, requesting withdrawal of that case.
Really? May I have a motion?
I want to approve the withdrawal.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better-Broaza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Hearing no further requests, we turn to eleven-fuck-out case BOA one-five-six-seven-zero-zero-nine with the address of thirteen Allenley Industries. Would the applicant and or the representative explain the case to the board first?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, I have a business address of Two Hundred Thompson Road. Today, and with me today is Ms. Alice Gomes and Mr. Miguel Martero, who are the owners of the property. We're here today seeking relief to change legal occupancy of the building from a one-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. The zoning sub-district here is a three-F four-thousand, and our lot size is approximately twenty-six-hundred square feet. The violations are as follows: rear yard insufficient, requirement is thirty feet, we have nineteen feet, lot area insufficient, I just explained that, lot width, lot frontage, requirement is forty-five feet, we have thirty-six and a half feet. With regard to the FAR, the required FAR is zero-point-eight, and we're proposing one-point-four. Madam Chair or Madam Ambassador, if we can start at the third level, we'll explain the plans going down, starting at level three. Unit three on the third floor will consist of one bedroom, one bath, and is approximately at least six-hundred-and-fifteen square feet. Unit two, coming down, is one bedroom, one bath, and consists of about six-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet. Level one will consist of the first floor and the garden level, and will have three beds, two baths, and is approximately thirteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet. If you go back to the picture, Madam Chair, of the property, you can see that it's a typical brownstone that you find in the South End or in many other neighborhoods in the city of Boston. We have a curb cut in parking, sufficient parking on the right-hand side of that picture. And again, the top level will be one bedroom unit, the second level will be another one bedroom unit, and then the garden level in the first floor shown will consist of the third level, the third unit, with three bedrooms and two baths. We can stop there, Madam Chair, and have entertain any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, can I?
Yes, sorry, if you can please confirm that you are proposing front yard parking?
No, no front yard parking. If you look at the-
That's on the drawings, okay.
The drawing might be a mistake, but if you look at the pictures show, we have a driveway to the right of the property, and it goes all the way back left of the yard, so there will be no cars parking in the front of the building at all.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. Asha with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Director Alexander has completed community process through our office. We did an abutters meeting eleven-twentieth, and the proponent presented before the SDC DSNI on January twenty-fifth. There was no oppositions for this development. People like to fact that this project is, sorry, this project initiated, is initiated by a long-time homeowner, and their goal is to provide a space for their family. SDC members suggested the creation of a big mural on the side of the building, and the homeowners actually liked the idea, and so our office would like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment, thanks. Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better-Broaza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-five-four-six-zero-one with the address of sixty-two North Beacon Street. If the applicant and or the representative is present, will they explain to the board first?
Hello, hi, everyone, Fred Jonah Manigat here. I am with Hierarchy Architects, I'm here representing the owner on this project.
Hi, everybody.
So, so it's just a survey plan, we're not making any decisions outside, just get to the architectural, yeah. So this, this project is a, it's a pretty simple project, it's in a, it's an existing single family in the Austin neighborhood of Boston. It is a, it is kind of a historic-looking building, we don't think it's in the register, but it's a beautiful building that's, a lot of the neighborhood- We don't think it's in the register, but it's a beautiful building, uh, that's, uh, a lot of the neighbors have fondness for. Uh, I think in previous versions, the owner was in front of the board, where they were proposing to turn this single-family into a four-unit building, where they will have a living unit in the basement. Uh, I think, uh, while the neighbors supported that move, I think the board was reluctant to approve, uh, adding a unit into the basement. So the, uh, the, the owner had hired me, I'm the second architect, uh, involved in this project, had hired me to reduce the scope. And right now, what we're proposing is to just turn the, the, the building into a three-family building. Uh, and one of the things we heard from past, uh, community meetings with the neighbors was, was the need to keep the building looking the way it is. And in previous, uh, versions, there were additions being added to the front that were really messing with the character of the building. And I think one of the things we were charged with was to try to keep the building looking the way it is, and, and, and trying to keep all the work inside, inside the building. So if you can move to the next, uh, page, and this is just a, this is just a, uh, you can just move to the next one, this is just a zoning analysis. This is a, this is a existing floor plan the way it is, and, and this is where the work is happening. So what we are proposing right now is to turn each floor into two-bedroom units. On the first floor, uh, it'll be two bedrooms, one and a half baths, same thing on the second floor. Uh, they both will be around 1,000 square feet. And when we get to the, to the third floor, it's, uh, it's a little smaller, so we're proposing two bedrooms, one bath. Uh, the only, the only work we do on the outside of the building is that there's a, there's an exterior deck where, that we are repairing and adding some stairs from, uh, communicating those decks, uh, from the third floor all the way down to ground as a, as a second unit of egress. Although, a second unit of egress is not required because the building will be sprinkled for three-family, the owner thought it would be, it would be nice to add that as a feature, as an extra, uh, level of, of protection for the, for the, for the users. So we, we are adding that. But basically, uh, the building would look exactly the same way it looks right now. If you drive by it or walk around it, it will not, it will not look any different. The only thing we are doing is kind of, uh, changing the interior floor plans to, to turn, to turn it into three-unit buildings.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony? Jessica, any raised hands? Any raised hands, Jessica? Are you with us?
I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, sir. We'll start with Eva and then go to Tony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted a butters meeting, uh, there were no butters in attendance. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the Austin Civic Association, and they were in, in support of this proposal, and met several times with the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, who ultimately ended up supporting as well. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Eva, then Tony.
Good, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony DeZidora, representing the Austin Civic Association. We'd like to go and work it in support.
Okay, thanks, I believe Eva put her hand down, so we have no addition, oh, yeah, we have no addition, no raised hands. Thank you. Uh, was that, may I have a motion?
Want to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia? Mr. Valencia? Ms. Weewell? Okay, thank you, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedderbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, everyone.
Thanks so much, everybody. Thank you.
We'll now move on to the hearing schedule for 11:00 AM. We have case BOA 1565595 with the address of 12 Geneva Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, uh, good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, Richard Linds, on behalf of the petitioner, the business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. Uh, if we could jump to page, actually, I provided it. There should be a slide deck that is included. We can, we can start on this one, but I did have a, a deck that I submitted to the board with some photos and renderings of the project as well. Is it possible, let's see if we can bring that up?
Are there alternate slides that, uh, Mr. Linds is referring to? If not, can you, I don't know what you can do, Mr. Linds.
Yeah, I, it does, doesn't do a service to the profit, but it's okay, we could, we could try to, uh-
Okay, they're looking for them now, so maybe we can start speaking and-
Yeah, I know, so we can jump to the next slide, I can start, at least on the site plan, and then talk a little bit about it. Um, so, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a proposal, uh, to convert an existing vacant lot uh, into a new multi-family four-story residential building. Uh, it's located in the, uh, edge of the Jeffries Point neighborhood, which we refer to as the Go Street neighborhood. Um, and the reason the photos are important was to, uh, show you the current conditions of Geneva Street. Uh, the board may recall, a number of projects recently having been approved. Uh, this is a little bit of a, oh, perfect, here we go. Uh, if you could jump down, I'll go to slide five, it would give us a good place to start. Thank you. So th- this is, uh, an area that is, um, somewhat formerly an industrial vacant site, uh, which is now, a vacant area which has now been, uh, become pretty popular with new development. Geneva Street is a private way, but with the, uh, development that is happening along that, uh, street, there are a number of improvements that are being proposed, uh, especially in connection with, uh, Article 80 size projects that are being either constructed or through review now. Uh, if you could scroll down to the next, maybe sixth or seventh slide? Just to get, yeah, probably a little further, yeah, a little further in, if we can go down with the street view. Yeah, it's a good, probably a good slide to start. So, yeah, perfect. So looking directly across the street from the site, Madam Chair, is an auto repair, uh, facility. As you can see, the cars that are all parked here are generally associated with that, uh, use. Uh, there are a number of cars that actually use this site for, uh, for parking. Um, our proposal obviously would make this a more compatible use with the changing scope of, uh, Geneva Street, including the multi-family dwell. If you can go to slide 10, please? Uh, with us, we have, uh, Trailer Rara from Joy Street Design, but I'll run through this quickly because I know the board's a little bit behind. Uh, but what we're showing here is the four-unit residential with, uh, living space on both, uh, on, on the ground as well as the three levels above. There was a private roof deck for unit four, uh, which would be the upper-level unit. Um, one of the things I will point out to the board is that under the planning spots and zoning amendments, uh, for the neighborhood, uh, a four-story building will be considered an as-of-right, uh, height for this neighborhood. Uh, multi-family use is already allowed, uh, multi-family use is being proposed, and that will be allowed under new zoning as well. Um, what we try to come up with is something that's a little bit more contextual with the new buildings that are being proposed or have been recently built. Uh, we are proposing no parking for the site. Uh, and I would point out, this is a very close walking distance to both airport T-station as well as, uh, Maverick T-station. Um, I would also point out under the current zoning, uh, we are required to seek relief under the provisions of Article 53 that do not comply with the current MFI district. However, the recommendations for new zoning for this area actually reduce a number of those, uh, non-conformities. Specifically, uh, related to the floor-to-area ratio, uh, there is no longer going to be requirement for maximum FAR. The limitations by Plan East Boston really have to do with setback, lot coverage, and permeability. Uh, I will point out that we worked, uh, with the architects to ensure that the layout of this building, uh, would not exceed 60% lot coverage, which we're at. Uh, we have 40% of our area, which is considered uncovered space under the, under the, uh, recommended zoning amendments, uh, of which easily 30% of that can be permeable, which will all be in compliance. This is also subject to Gcod, um, and we have our, uh, no harm in our approval, uh, with respect to that. If you could jump down to the next slide, please? Uh, let's go to more slides to the site plan. One more, please? Perfect. Um, so what we're showing here is our setbacks. Uh, we are setting our building back at three feet from each property line. As you can see, it's pretty consistent with the adjoining properties, both left and right. They are, uh, set back about three, over three feet. Uh, our building does go back slightly further than the building next to us. Uh, I would point out that this is a shallow lot condition, which is recognized under Article 53, uh, as being, uh, for which we're allowed to actually reduce what the setback requirement would be in the rear. Under new zoning, the setback requirement would be 16.6 feet. Our building itself is 17.1 feet. However, we do propose decks off of the rear of the building, uh, and we do understand that the new zoning amendments actually recognize that decks don't always count as part of the setback. In this particular case, I would also point out that the butter directly behind is the owner of the lot here as well. So, uh, the, the, that property will, uh, be the one that would be nearest impacted from this proposed, uh, development. And obviously, the owner of that property has no specific issues with respect to that. Uh, with respect to the parking, um, new zoning will allow for, um, an exemption for the, for one to three units parking. Uh, in this particular case, we're proposing four units. Uh, I believe it remains to be seen as to what the interpretation of that parking requirement will be. Uh, since going to the fourth unit, uh, our position is the intent of the code may not necessarily require four parking spaces for one additional unit above three, uh, but I'm sure that the board will have plenty of opportunity to interpret that. As I mentioned, um, Geneva Street is a private way. There is parking available on Geneva Street. Uh, the project directly across the street from this site, uh, the auto repair is going through the Article 80 review process, and many of those cars, uh, will ultimately be eliminated from parking, uh, along Geneva Street. So we believe that there will be ample, uh, opportunity for on-street parking as well as accept, access to, uh, transit. If you go to the next slide, please? Uh, next slide, floor plans. Um, so we're showing our ground level, uh, for unit one. Uh, that's a, it is a two-bedroom. Uh, we're showing the other three units, levels two, three, and four, all as three bedrooms. And that was a direct response to the comments that we did here through the community process. Uh, and I believe, uh, you'll get the report from ONS that we ultimately received the support of the Go Street Citizens Association based upon our design and our responses to some of the concerns and comments that they have. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please? So our upper-level units, levels three and four, and then our private roof deck is located as the rear of the building. Uh, and that roof deck would be accessible only to unit four. This is intended for homeownership, so each of these units would be for condominium. Next slide, please? Uh, showing our elevations, front, side, and rear. Uh, we do, uh, incorporate a spiral staircase off of the back deck for unit four to access the roof deck. Uh, we feel that, uh, the layout here is consistent with what the new zoning, uh, is permitting. Uh, two heights of 50 feet, we're actually below that, I believe, just at 41 feet. Uh, but the total of four stories would be something that is consistent with the zoning amendment. Uh, at this time, Madam Chair, I will pause for any questions by members of the board.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Is this in a, is this in a flood-prone area?
So it is, uh, to the chair, um, Ms. Bedderbraza, this is in the 0.2, but it is flood X. Um, so while C-FRO, it is in a C-FRO overlay, uh, the filing of this application was prior to any change that was noticed with the zoning, so it was not going to be subject. We aren't proposing any habitable space below grade. Uh, we do show a small area for a foundation, but I believe, uh, in just reviewing that through, uh, some conversation with the contractors, we'll be eliminating that. Uh, this will be a slab all.
Okay, I mean, it was noted on the BPDA, is, is Jeff Hampton here? By any chance, anyone from the BPDA?
Yes, Ms. Bedderbraza, I'm here.
Great, thank you. So, um, Jeff, um, I love your feedback on the note on this, uh, on this property in regards to, um, the units should be elevated two feet above the flood elevation.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, this is kind of an interesting, um, comment because, as you know, anything that's above three units require an accessible ground floor without, without an elevator. So how do you, how do you, you know, how do you reconcile both?
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Accessibility and, um, building habitable spaces above the base flood level.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a very delicate, uh, to say the least, uh, process. Right now, because it's new construction, I think, and because it's going to be in the new East Boston, we're trying to keep everything at least two feet above when it's in the flood zone. I understand through, uh, Attorney Linds, now, this is going to be slab-on, uh, grade. But it's something that we're trying to take a look at, uh, from a climate point of view, especially with the new, um, the new construction in East Boston. It's something that I think this would be the first case where we'd really have to take a look at accessibility and what this does to a proposed project when we're asking for two feet, but what does that do for, uh, the contractor and the development, so?
Right, and I mean, Sarah, Sarah Tilton didn't comment on that because it was, you know, it's proposed at level.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm the one that's picking up these, these two conflicts. So if you can please talk to your BPDA, uh, in regards to, um, providing us some feedback on what takes precedent, I would assume that both are important.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm sorry that it wasn't a little more clear in our recommendation.
Okay, so with, so are you comfortable that this is at level and not above, uh, two feet as recommended?
Uh, yes, because there's been other development, as Attorney Linds has said, along that street. Article 80 projects have been through this. Um, so I, I would be, uh, comfortable with this. If the board were to be, uh, inclined to approve it, I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay, thanks, thanks for your comment.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, hopefully a quick one, Madam Chair. Um, the picture I see shows that the street is not paved. Uh, is this project going to do anything about that, or just continue on as a?
This, thank you, it's a question, Mr. Stenbridge. That's been a, a, a hot topic, uh, in East Boston, or at least in the section of East Boston with Geneva Street. Um, I was probably involved with the first building that was permitted on that street, and it's been, uh, sort of a, a concern over time, and it's more development-
I think you just froze, Mr. Linds.
Yeah, I didn't mean to do that to him, but, uh-
All right, oh, Mr. Stenbridge, um, okay.
Am I still here? Can I walk the block?
Okay, you're, you're, you're back, but you, we didn't hear you for about 30 seconds.
I'm going to shut my camera, if that's okay, that might-
That's perfect, yep, please.
Yeah, uh, so what I was saying, Mr. Stenbridge, I apologize, was that Geneva Street has been a hot topic. Uh, with the, uh, current Article 80 project that is, um, currently under construction, as well as, uh, some other projects that are going through the review process now, there is a commitment, uh, by the larger projects to contribute towards a repaving effort of Geneva Street. There's a number of utilities that do need to be added, um, especially to our site. Uh, and we're also, uh, agreeing to contribute towards some of those expenses and improvements. Um, I think as development has happened on Geneva, there's been more of a, um, I, I guess, a pool of resources to address Geneva Street, and that's something that, uh, the collective owners will be, be looking at, especially the new developers on that street.
Thank you, Attorney Linds.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, ONS hosted a butters meeting for this project on December 7th, 2023. Uh, Noah Butters were present on the call. The applicant met with the Go Street Citizens Association, and the group voted in January of 2024 to support the project with a vote of 10 in favor and five opposed. Uh, the voters' comments were as follows. One comment in support focused on the design of the building and expressed that they felt that the renderings of the bu, the building looked beautiful. Uh, there were four comments in opposition focusing on the lack of parking in the lot coverage of the building. One resident stated most concerned that when the rear decks are considered, uh, considered, the building will take up nearly the entire parcel. Uh, another resident stated that there was way too many variances for the project. Additionally, there was some confusion from the neighborhood about the parking requirements in the zoning and how the project varies, uh, from its, and how it fits into the, uh, zoning proposed with the Plan East Boston. from its, and how it fits into the zoning proposed with the plan East Boston. As mentioned before, though, the Civic Association openly voted to support this proposal without defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli of Boston Brownwater Trust. And we have both G Card letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Farah from Councilor Coletti's office. At this time, based on community support, the council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Perez for the Carpenter's Union would like to go on record on support of this project.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Does that may have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two proviso. One, that the project undergoes BPDA design review on the exterior vertical egress in regards to the size of the egress and decking. And the second proviso would be that the access to the roof be through an internal stair on the fourth floor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Miss Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have two companion cases. The first is B O A, case B O A, one, five, six, three, six, six, eight, with the address of twenty-eight Swan Avenue. Along with that, we have case B O A, one, five, six, three, six, seven, one, with the address of third Swan Avenue. If the applicant and their representative present, would they explain case in the board to us?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Stemberich. Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. Richard Lynn's, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, I believe we should have a slide deck for this one as well that we supply to the board. Excellent. Maybe jump down to slide three. Good place to start. So, Madam Chair, this property is located in Orient Heights section of East Boston, pretty much close to the Revere border. It's a little over ten thousand square feet. You can see on the next slide, I will highlight that for you so we can understand the extent of the, the total limits of the site. We are proposing a consolidation and a redivision of the lots. Each lot will ultimately contain a little over five thousand square feet. If we could just advance the next slide, please. And we are now proposing, based upon some intense community conversation, two separate four-unit dwellings with four parking spaces each that will be located on-site. If we can jump down to the next slide, please. I do want to point out just some history behind how we've approached this for the neighborhood. And we started this project sometime back where we originally were proposing a total of twelve residential units. And that was done prior to the recommendations for Plan East Boston. And we've made a number of adjustments and changes. And while they don't specifically all align with the recommendations of Plan East Boston, I feel that this project certainly represents more of what the community expected or at least would want ultimately for this site. If we can go down to the next slide, please. That's a pretty good place to stop. So what we're seeing here is a mix of one, two, and there are some three-family dwellings in the vicinity. As you can see, our lot probably represents the largest lot along this block. And the changes that we are proposing to the site and what we've based our design on for purposes of, based on the feedback that we did receive from the neighborhood, was to try to come up with something a bit more contextual that represented what we do see in the neighborhood currently. So if you go to the next slide, please. One more slide. So the two four-unit dwellings actually are similar in some of the style that we do see along that section of Swan Ave. And some of the comments that we did here, and you'll probably see this in the recommendations of the BPDA, is that this new zoning district, being the EBR three district, would allow only up to three units per lot. One of the things that we did communicate to the neighborhood was that, under the new zoning, and this is somewhat one of the ironic features of having the area rezoned, these lots could be divided and made into four separate lots that would all allow each to have three units and no requirement for parking. So we could conceivably figure out how to do twelve units on the site with no parking, but we did hear a lot of feedback from the neighborhood that did want to see parking. And our client feels that this is a much more contextual project as compared to what we would be able to do as a right under new zoning. So if we can go down to the next slide, please. So a couple of items that we do require relief for, even under the plan East Boston, as I mentioned, that these being four units would be considered a multifamily. It's currently a two-F district, so variance would be required either way. But as I said, even though we are proposing eight units, the site could easily accommodate up to twelve units based upon a redivision of the lots, and that could be done as a matter of right. We comply with pretty much all the other requirements under the proposed amendments to the zoning for Plan East Boston. When we get to the rear yard, the requirement is a thirty-three-foot setback. We're at anywhere from twenty-nine point nine to thirty feet. So just slightly short of the thirty-three feet. And one of the reasons we are at that number is that we've made a number of adjustments to our building to try to address some of the comments and concerns that we heard from abutters to the rear. Our abutters to the rear are comfortable with the setback that we've provided based upon how we're organizing the back of the property. And we'll see that in the site plan in a moment. The next item that we would, would require is the usable open space for the area that would be available for permeable space. We have a little over twenty-nine percent in that area. It will be shown on the site plan. That would generally comply with Plan East Boston, which does require a minimum of thirty percent. Floor area ratio is a one point two for each building. That would comply under new zoning, as there is no maximum FAR required. And as you scroll down, you can see a little bit further with respect to the parking. We do have a number of, we are providing four parking spaces per building, a total of eight spaces for both projects, which would be in compliance with Plan East Boston's recommendations. I would point out that this project also is within very close walking distance to the Suffolk Downs T Station. So even though we are providing a parking, that's in direct response to the comments that we did here from the neighbors. Next slide, if we can move down to slide twelve. Next slide, please. One more. Perfect. So our site plan is showing actually the project at twenty-eight and thirty. There were a lot of shifts and pulls with respect to how we laid this out on the site to address concerns of direct abutters both left, right, as well as their abutters to the rear. We do show a good amount of area, both left and right of the building, as well as the rear corners. We've tried to locate the parking to the middle. That would be accessed by a shared driveway, which is of sufficient width under the code to allow for vehicles to access the rear parking that's located here on the site plan. We create landscape areas both to the left and right corners, as you can see. We've worked closely with direct abutters to the rear on what they would like to see back there. We are proposing an additional buffer that will go beyond the parking spaces on that border that separates us from the back, from the, from the rear abutter. We are proposing street trees on the site. Swan Ave is also a private way, very similar to Geneva Street. And we will be adding curb cut and sidewalk per PIC requirements for the, for the entire length of our site. Next slide, please.
Mr. Lynn, it's hard for me to see the notation. What are the side yard on that site plan? What's the side yard to the left and right?
Yep. So we're showing a range. On the left side, it goes as narrow as four feet, one inch. The required setback is three feet under the new zoning. It actually goes to about four feet, ten inches as you get closer to Swan Ave. But the narrowest point is four feet, one inch. On the right side, it's about nine and a half feet from the lot line to the building, which combined eighteen, almost nineteen feet between the two buildings with the middle portion being the driveway.
Okay, because your chart, so I thought that's what I read. Your chart that you showed first had that you were proposing a side yard setback of three feet. But in your drawings, it says.
Yeah. I apologize.
Thanks for the abbreviation. Okay, no further.
Yeah, I think originally we were at three. We actually increased it, so I apologize for that, but we've increased the side yards.
Pardon me, does there exactly some architect for the project? The back corner of the second floor is actually about three point six. So it's a little smaller than the fourth floor. And so if you imagine the second floor is extended above that, it does narrow down to that. Just for clarity, or it says landscape permaculture.
Thank you. So we can move down to, I believe, slide thirteen. So here we show the front elevations. And the height that will be permitted in the district under new zoning would be thirty-five feet. It actually would allow for a full three-story. But again, since we've been in conversations with the community on this, we did hear a lot of feedback about trying to respect some of the existing context of Swan Ave. And that's why Eric has come up with these designs, to be a little bit more contextual. Next slide, please. So our floor plans, we are showing a three-bedroom. That would be an accessible unit at the lower level of fourteen hundred square feet. And then on the second level, we have the two two-bedrooms, a little over eleven hundred square feet. If we jump to the next slide, we see level, Unit Four. Again, these are showing each building. So this is just essentially being replicated on the lot to the, to the other side. So these are generally the same layouts for both buildings. We can see here a larger seventeen hundred square foot unit. That includes a two-bedroom plus. We have an office nursery located towards the front of the building. We do not include, as you can, as you saw from the elevations, not including roof decks. This is a specific ask of the neighbors to not incorporate that into the project. We originally were showing roof decks on a triple-decker-style building. Those have been eliminated along with the full three stories that we were originally showing. The last slide, I believe, slide seventeen, is just our elevations, our full elevations. But I can pause there and address any comments or questions of the board at this time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Okay, let's hear public testimony and circle back.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. Melody Eagle was with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting for this project on November eighth of two thousand and twenty-three. Fourteen abutters were present on the call. Numerous concerns were brought up on this call concerning parking and the lot coverage, with some residents saying that a project of this size would disrupt the lives of those who had previously purchased a home on the street for the quiet and isolation it offered. There is also a concern with the flow of water and a concern that water would flow to other properties on the street. There was one comment in favor saying that this project was much better than the original one that was presented and has a much more appropriate and softer look. The applicant met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council and the group voted in February of two thousand and twenty-four to oppose a project with a vote of twenty-one opposed, ten in favor, and two abstained. The majority of the concerns for this project are due to its non-compliance with Plan East Boston, due to the unit counts on this lot, the setback not meeting the third lot requirement, and the open space not meeting the minimum requirements. Additionally, our office received multiple letters from the Butters and the Neighborhood Council concerned that they were being, quote-unquote, threatened by the attorney that if they came out in opposition to this project, the proponent would subdivide the lot and build more units as a right. Another abutter sent a letter stating another abutter sent a letter stating that if the project should be approved today, they would like it to meet the following requirements. A max of three stories, maintaining a setback of a third of the lot, and no roof decks. Overall, folks in the Orient Heights community voiced concerns about the precedent that is set if the zoning board approves the variances for this project after the work the neighborhood went through to arrive at Plan East Boston and the remarks the attorney has made towards the Butters. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if I can respond on this press.
Well, can I go through the community?
I'm sorry. Yep.
You put first, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Farah from Councilor Coletti's office. At this time, based on strong community opposition and based on a non-compliance with Plan East Boston, the council would like to concur to some of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. General McEagret City Councilor, Aaron Murphy's office. We are in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other raised hands? Jessica, are there any other raised hands?
Hello?
Okay, Mr. Cole, please.
Yes, yes, I am here. Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Richard Beptister. I live at twenty-four Swan Ave. I'm a thirty-nine-year homeowner here, and I am an abutter to the project. I am but one house away from the proposed project. And I oppose this project wholeheartedly and urge the Board of Appeals to reject this project outright for the following five reasons. One, the project does not comply with current zoning or the proposed zoning as planned of Plan East Boston. Two, the project is not keeping in character with the thirteen structures already on Swan Avenue. Three, there are no four-unit structures on Swan Avenue. And contrary to Attorney Lynn's suggestion, I don't know of any three-unit structures on Swan Avenue unless someone is subdividing a basement. All structures on Swan Avenue are one or two units. Number four, the lot size does not support two four-unit structures. And to my knowledge, number five, the developer has not shown any sort of hardship and therefore does not qualify for zoning relief. I urge you to please reject this proposal. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Jessica? Okay, are there? I don't know if Jessica's not with us, and I cannot see if there are other raised hands. Okay, she's having.
One raised hand, Madam Chair. Is that Richard, did he just speak?
Yes.
Okay, then there's no additional reason, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Lynn, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, I do, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments that were made by ONS. I want to point out a few things because I feel like this is going to happen a lot as we're transitioning with zoning in East Boston. First and foremost, I don't threaten anyone when I make a presentation before the community. And I take exception to reference that we were threatening people. What I do, as I do in all my zoning presentations, is I present to the community what the recommended zoning would be for the area. In addition, I draw a contrast between what the recommended zoning would allow, especially in this instance, when recommended zoning would allow more units, larger buildings, and no parking. And the reason I put that before the neighborhood was because over the multiple hearings that we've presented this project at, we heard that the parking was a concern on Swan Ave. More importantly, we heard that buildings at three stories, triple-decker, were out of scale and not consistent with the architecture along Swan Ave. I reminded everyone, I did not come up with Plan East Boston recommendations. These are the recommendations by the BPDA. And they allow for triple-decker three-in-a-building. More importantly, they allow for up to six units on a lot that is fifty feet wide, which this site is capable of accommodating with the subdivision for a separate three-unit building. So at a bare minimum, nine units could be allowed with only six parking spaces. At most, we could just divide this lot, which is over a hundred feet wide, into four twenty-five-foot-wide lots and create three separate three-family, a four-separate three-family structures, a total of twelve units that requires no parking under new zoning. That was explained to the neighborhood in a way so that it can understand that if this developer chose to go that route, that is something he has the right to do under new zoning, but that's not what we were proposing. And we, the reason we spelled that out for the neighborhood was because of the concerns that we did hear. So while this project, and I did hear the comments of, of people, including the councilor's office, does not meet specifically the requirements of Plan East Boston, it certainly represents something that is more in line with what the neighbors asked us to consider, especially considering the number of units we're proposing, which is four less than will be allowed, and the eight parking spaces we're proposing, which is eight more than will be required as a right if we re-divide these lots. I fully understand that this isn't exactly what the neighborhood, I'm sorry, exactly what Plan East Boston requires, and that's one of the reasons. and that's one of the reasons why we've went with this project, even though the neighbors, you know, opposed it through the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council. I feel the board, yeah, needs to consider that, that we're in that transition area where the new zoning actually may allow for more units and less parking, which is something I believe the neighborhood's been very consistent about, what they didn't want to see.
Okay, thank you. Can we hear from Mr. Hampton? Can you expand on the BPDA's recommendation?
Sure, thank you very much.
And also, Mr. Hampton, the draft Plant East Boston has not been implemented yet.
No.
So currently, we're in the existing zoning.
Correct, that's scheduled to be taken up by the zoning commission in April 24th. So, thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend the denial without prejudice on this because of the Plant East Boston, where there is a vacant lot of greater than 10,000 square feet. We cannot support a proposed project that does not meet the recommendations of Plant East Boston in the proposed zoning. So we're staying very hard on this until the new zoning gets passed because when you have a lot of this size, we believe as an agency that you can have a project that meets the recommendations of Plant East Boston. So for those reasons, we're on record for denial without prejudice.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice. I think it's just, it's too close to the vote for Plant East Boston, and, you know, I think we need to stick to our guns on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
I'm voting no, not because the zoning is in limbo in terms of process, but more for the amount of impermeable surfaces as being proposed to parking.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Here votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1570041 with the address of 131 Hancock Street. It's the applicant and their representative's first board representative present. Please explain to the board, please.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
You can hear me now, okay, perfect, great. Is applicant on, please raise your hand? Or if you're.
Just, yeah, should we start?
Oh, go ahead, yep, go ahead, Donald, thank you. Are you with Lonnie as well, Donnie, Donald?
Yes.
Yes, okay, gotta make him a panel.
It's the Don and Lonnie show this morning.
Okay, perfect, I just made him a panel, thank you, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Don Wees, project committee counsel with the law firm of Dean Torphy at 175 Federal Street here in Boston. With me is Lonnie Ash, who is a senior member of the design team at the Boston-based architectural firm CBT. I'll give you a few background comments about the program and then turn the presentation over to Lonnie. We're here on behalf of the Conservatory Lab Charter School, as its name suggests, it's a citywide charter school. The conservatory, in the name, refers to the fact that the school was founded on the belief that musical education should be integral to academic pursuits. And so all the children who enrolled at the school in K-8 learned playing instruments. By the time the students have been at the school a few years, if anyone on the board has seen one of these performances, they're actually capable of some pretty remarkable orchestral music. So that's the general concept of the school. There is a lower and upper school. The entire institution is K-8, but we're concerned here today with the proposed expansion to the lower school, which includes grades K-1 through 2. The proposal is at the lower school, which is within a 3F5,000 district in Dorchester, with the benefit of a large lot, wherever it's almost an acre, it's about 40,000 square feet. The existing facility is roughly 19,000 square feet. We're proposing about a 6,000 square foot addition. Purpose of the addition is to add additional space. And you see the picture, it's a very handsome, very clean-lined, light-filled, really lovely space for the kids. The purpose of the addition is to add to the facilities that are in better performance space, that are exercise gym space and their cafeteria space, sort of a multi-function space. That's the concept here. We need relief, minor relief for FAR. We actually disagree with ISD that we need a front yard setback variance, but we've been cited for that, and as a precaution, we'll ask the board for that variance relief as well. The school's been operating here without incident for a number of years. Seems to be quite well supported by the community. The board has received a support letter from the Hancock Street Civic Association, which was quite positive about the project. It's our sense there has not been overwhelming community interest in the project just because it's a known quantity in the neighborhood and seems to be appreciated and embraced. That's the backdrop. Let's have Lonnie Ash walk you through his lovely turn.
Great, thanks, Don, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So as Don mentioned, we are proposing a modest addition to the site on the right-hand, more right-hand side of the site. We are proposing roughly a 5,700 square foot addition, which will add the cafeteria and gym space in addition to a multipurpose classroom. These are programs that the school currently does not have, so this is really adding to the capabilities and the functionality of the school. We are not increasing the enrollment, so it still will be the same amount of kids, but we're adding a program that they currently do not have. This will allow them to conduct indoor recess or indoor gym activities when there's inclement weather, as well as when it's winter time, potentially too cold outside. And then there is kind of a key plan on the lower right-hand side, which shows you kind of what's the existing building versus what's the addition. Moving on to the, as Don mentioned, on the front setback, and this is just on the lower, the lower level, there is some existing program space, which we are doing some minor renovations to the existing building. So move to the next slides, please. We did put together the diagram showing our setback as we are complying with the zoning 15-foot setback. We also diagrammed out the adjacent lots to show the prevailing setback of the street. For the most part, a lot of the buildings on, are on Hancock Street, are closer to the street than the 15-foot requirement, so we are setback further than that, as well as maintaining that kind of, that street scape with our building. And just for reference, we are including some of the elevations. It is, it is a single-story addition. We are under all the other height requirements. We make sure to maintain kind of a scale that is appropriate for the neighborhood. But of course, as a gym space, we did want to make sure that it was high enough for those gym activities. And with that, I will turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on December 18th of 2023. There was no one in attendance, and there was no concerns raised at that meeting. As you heard from the applicant's representation, they were reached out to the local neighborhood association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. With that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review of the site plan to review the landscape impermeable area of the lot and to assess sewer easement.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Here votes yes, motion carries. We'll hear one more case then take a break.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Well, next would be case BOA 1529408 with an address of 31 Rosedale Street. We also have a note on that case that the applicant needs to request a deferral to a later date so we can, so it can be re-advertized due to an updated refusal letter, and the applicant needs to file for the building code.
Okay, well, then we can take our break sooner. May I have a motion?
Um, motion to defer the.
May 31st?
Motion to defer.
Or please.
May 31st?
21st.
21st, sorry.
Are you the applicant?
Okay, we'll try this again, May 30th, May 21st.
Sorry, are you the applicant, Mr. Santos?
Yes, hi, good afternoon to the board and to the members. My name is Javanti Santos, and my wife is.
So are you seeking the deferral or no?
No, no, we're not.
Oh, you're not seeking the defer?
No, no, we just wanted to correct that we're not seeking defer.
Okay, then, I don't know where that came from. Then if that's the case.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, can you speak in? Revised plans were submitted, and the plans examiner reviewed those revised plans. And upon that, additional violations was added on and also a building code refusal.
Okay, so, so this needs to be deferred due to those additional violations, then? Is that correct? Okay, so, does that make sense to the applicant? So they, so this needs to.
Where are those?
So you can speak with the staff, but it, due to the additional violations, this will need to be re-advertized and heard at a later date. So let's move forward with the deferral, and please reach out to staff, or the staff will reach out to you. Okay, so Mr. Stembridge made a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Here votes yes, the motion carries. A 15-minute break?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, we're new to this process. We did go through an abutters meeting.
So Stephanie, can, can someone reach out to them? This is, this is.
Please do, we haven't had any email, yeah.
Yeah, they need to reach out to you. This is not due to your process or anything. It's a fact of additional violations being, you know, added, which means you need to re-advertize.
Oh, wow, okay, yeah.
Okay, so.
We want to, yeah, thank you.
Please take care of that, Stephanie, or somebody with them.
We will, we will, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you. All right, break. All right, break. Valencia?
Recording in progress.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Mr. Valencia? He doesn't look like he's rejoined yet. Uh, why don't we get started and he should be back online?
Then with that, we'll return to the case, the hearings for scheduled for 11:00 PM, 11:00 AM. And we'll begin with case BOA 1526561 with the address of 1015 Hyde Park Avenue. If the applicant and board would represent it present, will they explain to the board this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
For some reason I have an echo. Did that echo go away, Madam Chair?
Yes, I think so.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of 168 Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner Elias Akiki as well as the project architect Jonathan Stone. This is a proposal to erect a new four-story, nine-unit residential dwelling with nine ground-level parking spaces located within the 2F 5,000 sub-district on approximately 8,071 square-foot lot. The parcel is currently used as a parking lot. Property is located along the Hyde Park Ave mixed-use commercial corridor, which is populated with commercial uses and residential uses on a transient-oriented thoroughfare. The erection of the multifamily dwelling is aligned with the planning goals of increasing the city's housing stock along commercial corridors and areas serviced by the transit. The applicant understands the need to create more affordable housing opportunities and even though not required to do so, has committed to entering into an agreement with the Office of Housing to offer one unit as affordable. Ground floor, which can be viewed from, actually, this is a perfect page right here. Ground floor will consist of covered parking in the rear. Seven of those spaces will be covered, two as you can clearly see from this image here of the site plan, two will be in the exterior of the rear yard. Also on the ground floor within the building itself, there will be a lobby, mailroom, bike storage, mechanical trash room, and an elevator access. All units will be located on the first floor, second floor, and third floor. Each floor will be a carbon copy of one another containing two bedrooms in a one-bedroom unit, which will range from approximately 680 square feet for the one beds and approximately 923 to 955 square feet for the two bedrooms. We have violations for use. We are proposing nine units in the 2F sub-district, but the proposal is aligned with the planning goals of Boston 2030 of increasing housing stock along commercial corridors and transient areas. We have a violation for FAR. We're proposing a 4.0 FAR and a .5 is what is compliant. Again, the proposed density aligns with the goals outlined in the planning context, allowing more density for mixed-use corridors within transient-oriented neighborhoods. We have height violation. We have violation for both stories and in feet. The proposal calls for four stories and 41 feet. What is compliant here is two and a half stories and 35 feet. But again, the density aligns with the goals within the planning context as previously stated. We do have a usable open space violation. We're proposing approximately 224 square feet per unit of open space and 1,750 square feet is what is required. We understand the need to provide more open space within projects, but this sub-district requirement is very high and also can be addressed during design review for other alternative measures of providing more open space. We do have a side yard violation. Proposal is compliant on the left-hand side if we're looking at the building head-on, but it's non-conforming on the right-hand side with a setback of approximately 4 feet and 4 inches. 10 feet is what is required in this sub-district. We do have parking insufficiency. Code requires two spaces per unit and this proposal calls for one space per unit, which is aligned with the initiative reducing dependency on private vehicles. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? There are none, may I put the testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office can defer to the judgment of this board. When I saw us in the Butters meeting on January 10th, I was lightly attended. The applicant then went on to meet with the local civic associations, securing a letter of support from the Hyde Parks Central River Group, which we forwarded to this board. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time, but that will defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Gabriel Cruz from Council of Repentance's office. The councilor would like to go on record that he is in support of this project. The council believes that developers have done a great job engaging with the committee and that this building will be a great addition. Thank you.
Okay, Simon? I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead, Joe.
That's okay. Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor, Aaron Murphy's office, would like to go on record in support of the applicant today. Thank you.
Um, caller 617364, go ahead.
You're unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board and members of the board. Craig Martin with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. And this was, this claim was presented to us. I'm not, we're not, was in the voice of opposition. But the common comment with the design, why does it have to be? Basically, it does become a sort of, a square, straight building. No, no unique adjectives at all to the building. And it's just not attractive was what the common comment was. Appreciate if you could consider passing for a fancier structure.
Thank you. And Simon, I sent a request, I'm new. Looking to, oh, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Uh, yes, that's me.
Yep, can you state your name and address and tell us if you're...
My name is Simon Demastini. Address is 53 Erie Street.
Okay. Are you here to speak on 1015 Hyde Park Ave?
No, that's not me. I am here to speak on...
Okay, so we're on 1015 Hyde Park Ave. Just can I hear her? I have no additional raised hands, thanks. Okay.
If I could just, just factor in something too, what came over late yesterday and I believe it was said to the zoning Board of Appeals, which came from the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, was a letter of support as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
You, you mentioned that you were open to providing an affordable unit. Is that kind of working with MOH and on an affordable unit agreement?
Yes, we will.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with some provisals. One being that the project enters into an agreement with MOH to provide one affordable unit. Um, the second is for BPDA Design Review to look at the site planning, to open up more usable space, to look at the amount of parking, uh, to add features on the exterior that would enhance the building in regards to balconies.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair, so yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have, um, three companion cases. First being case BOA 1549196 with the address of 20 Rockview Street. Next, we have case BOA 1482958 with the address of 22 Rockview Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1549209 with the address of 24 Rockview Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, will they explain the case, case through the board?
Uh, yes, Mr. Stenbridge, and my name is Kyle Smith. Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate your time today. Um, Sotero Law Business Address of 359 Newbury Street. And thank you for calling up the eight-page presentation deck we have provided. Um, the call for this proposal is to take an existing roughly 19,000 bedroom-foote lot and subdivide it, which has resulted in the ALT refusal number that you see there in front of you, and then to erect two new single-family type condominium units on a resulting 5,000 square-foot parcel. Um, there's then two ERT numbers. We've provided this eight-page slide deck to try and help synthesize the project for the board. Uh, so if you'd like to scroll the page too, this is a good topographical view of the proposal. You'll see the existing rear structure at 22 Rockview Street. There's no intended change to the structure. Again, we have a abnormally large parcel, as you can see from those parcels that are situated around it. Um, to our immediate left is 1416 Rockview Street, which is the prior recipient of ZBA approval to build this two-family structure. Uh, its footprint and what they encountered in building the structure is relevant to the end footprints as provided and proposed by this applicant. Uh, to our immediate right is 32 Rockview Street, and that was an existing large single-family that the prior iteration of this board also provided ZBA approval to expand that to a four-unit structure. Uh, and you can see respective footprints and setbacks up and down the street. Uh, we've also noted specifically letters of support, which we'll go through later. But you can see to our immediate rear, we have a letter of support from our immediate rear of Butter who was also on this call to offer his opinion directly to you. Um, the resulting proposal would have a pork chop-type lot with about 18 feet of frontage to the right of the structure to allow for adhesion for, sorry, the existing driveway. Uh, and then the resulting parcel would be about 5,000 square feet in a rectangular orientation to the front of the lot along Rockview. Um, if any members of the board have been in this portion of Rockview, Rockview is called that way because of existing ledge and the like on the street. The existing, uh, structure 22 Rockview is about 18 feet elevated off of the road off of Rockview Street. So by natural geological, um, orientation of rocks and ledge, uh, the front portion proposed to be carved off is uniquely separated from the back. the front portion proposed to be carved off is uniquely separated from the balance of the lot. So in about a, you know, 10, 15-foot linear distance, we have an elevation change of about 15 to 18 feet. So the footprint of 22 is significantly elevated above the proposed footprints of the new structures. I mentioned 1416 to our left being the recipient of zoning relief for its construction, which occurred in about 2021. There's a lot of ledge there, too, and to build that building footprint, that builder developer had to, you know, jackhammer out and remove a significant amount of ledge to provide for those footprints. Because of that and the kind of sting to the community of that development project, the proponent who lives at 22 Rockview, intends to live there in the distant future, has proposed to separate what would be a two-unit contiguous building to two separate footprints. And by doing so, that's allowed him to remove to the least amount possible the need for removal for ledge, pretty much strictly just for the sake of running utilities into the two proposed structures. So by splitting off the buildings and making them two footprints for two proposed, you know, single-family condominium units of about 1,600 square foot left, 120 square foot right, and by putting parking in the center, we have reduced the need to then remove ledge, which is a significant pain point in the community. If you'd like to scroll to slides three and four, this will give you a good, sorry, one more slide. This will give you a view up the street for perspective renderings for height comparison. 32 Rockview being the blue structure to our right, 1416 being the green structure to our left. And then next slide is a view down the street. And this would show a good perspective of the proposed, between the structures would be where the curb cut would be for about one car width to then allow for four parking spaces located between the two units, effectively tandem left and tandem right for the respective units. If you keep scrolling through the slide deck, the next slide here shows you kind of an architectural aesthetic rendering of parking footprints and plantings in the resulting lot being approximately 5,000 square feet in overall square footage. Next slide shows you rough proposed footprints. Again, this is proposed to be single-family condominium units. So a condo unit left, condo unit right, prospectively 20 and 24 Rockview. Again, no basements proposed because of the need to eliminate and wanting to eliminate the need for ledge removal. You can also see the elevation changes to the rear. You know, again, over about a 10 to 15-foot linear span, you have about 15, 18 feet of elevation change. If you keep scrolling down, you'll see we have different setback violations. This is to give you some perspective of the front and side-left and side-right setbacks in comparison to those things in very close proximity to us, up and down Rockview. So you can see right in line with the medians. And if you keep scrolling down, this is the summary area. It's put together to show you the rough FARs of average and median and the proposed FAR for the proposed two-unit condo structures, being just above the median average for the community. The parcel to the rear, we have a letter of support. They're off of a terrace or a street, so we have uniquely deep lots in this area that have been otherwise, you know, having private ways to permit more housing to be built along those and in those deeper lots that have been subdivided. So again, what we're proposing is in line with both the FAR and the setbacks of other similarly situated properties and structures. And with that being said, I'll turn it back over to the board for commentary. I do also have the owner on the line as well and the project architect, Rick Ames, to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Can I start with Mr. Hampton from BPDA? Just like to understand your recommendation. Mr. Hampton, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. This is one of those occasions where I think the refusal letter from ISD and the plans that we had didn't match up. And we didn't know what exactly was being proposed, plans versus the letter. So instead of trying to guess with the plans, the planners here, what was trying to happen, we just recommended deferral because this went through more than a handful of people here who could not decipher the plans versus the rejection letter. So that's the reason for our deferral usually. You know, we would make some sort of recommendation, but it was just that confusing.
So, Mr. Hampton, and this is also for the lawyer, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, I think when you presented the project, you said two single-family. And I think that's incorrect the way that you presented it because the refusal letter basically said that you're proposing a two-detached units on a single lot. And so I read the refusal letter corresponding to that definition, and I think potentially what was confused, could have confused the BPDA plan reviewers is that there was no zoning chart that was applicable to the two-detached homes.
Sure, just to maybe to provide some clarity, we, you know, did draw this to step the hands of attention last week. If you look at the actual refusal letters, they are by themselves somewhat contradictory. They lend themselves to confusion. On the lower portion of the refusal letter, it does say new construction of a, one of two buildings on one lot for two-unit condominium in two separate structures. So the latter part of the refusal letter is accurate, is that it is the upper part that lends itself to confusion. So that is, the summary is provided by ISD, but there is a portion of it being correct.
So you didn't see it, why we couldn't even decipher what was being asked? We didn't want to sign off on anything or make a recommendation on anything that was that confusing?
Understood. We do have a 20 with a proposed 22 and a 24 on Rockview. We have three associated refusal letters and three associated BOA numbers. So we do believe that there are lots of twos and some confusion rendered, but it does not change the proposal for a single curb cut with four proposed offshoot parking spaces with a resulting lot with two single-family type condominium structures as, you know, indicated clearly on a part of the refusal letter.
Okay.
But are they detached? So this is where, this is where, in the refusal letter, to me, it's very clear. It says construct a new detached two-family dwelling on a lot. But you're describing it as two single-family dwellings. And they're, and it's going to give you specific violations in regards to front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks based on the definition. So I, the architect is here, there are, I'm looking specifically at 20 Rockview Street, and there is a zoning kind of chart at the very end of the presentation. And it lists on there, you know, the, that there's 2F 5,000, two-family, and then there's 3F 5,000, three-families, but it doesn't really annotate within the proposal what you're requesting, what you're asking. So I think it's not very clear. The proposal is clear, but the violations should be extremely clear in terms of drawing on the site plan, you know, those side yards that you're asking for relief.
Understood. If you look in the purpose section of the refusal letter, in the secondary area, it does indicate, I think, more clearly the proposal. I just also want to point out, too, that the cited violations contemplate the two structures. There's a 50-foot frontage and width requirement. We have two structures, arguably that would be an aggregate. So we have been appropriately cited for our inappropriate frontage and width requirements based upon two separate structures. So I do think the cited violations are all accurate.
Correct, okay. So the refusal letter is accurate to the plans that we see?
Correct.
Okay.
With the correctly cited violations.
To me, that makes sense. And, and, and I hope my colleagues, it's clear to them as well. So I don't have any further questions because I'm clear. But I'm not sure if my colleagues are clear.
Okay, well, let's see if there are any other questions from the board. Hearing none, I'm going to go with public testimony and circle back.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Caroline Peters, and I'm here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a Butters meeting in October of 2023. About 10 people were in attendance via Zoom, and there was significant opposition expressed at the meeting. Those opposed voiced concerns around density, noise, and health concerns resulting from the drilling as the putting stone on the property. The applicant presented the project to the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee on January 3rd, and the committee came to a split vote, offering no recommendation to the board. I have received 10 letters of opposition from the Butters and four letters of support from the broader neighborhood. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
You? Okay, and second, we'll get to Councilor Weber's office. Erin?
Hi, yes. So I'm here, attending Councilor at the Weber's office. We are the district councillor for the property. The proposed plan, the homeowners has agreed to restrict any drilling and land construction until 8:00 a.m. They have also agreed to park all construction vehicles in those long driveways. Provide a project manager's phone number to abutting neighbors for any complaints regarding construction. We have heard from many of Butters who are concerned with the effects of the construction and have not felt engaged. And we do trust that the ZBA will take their testimony seriously, as I believe many are on the call confirming the JPNC took no official position, and our office has no official position and will defer to the judgment of the board.
Thank you. Rebecca, and then Peter?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Rebecca Ginsburg. This is a statement I'm going to read from 19 neighbors living on Rockview Street. All of them will be affected by Mr. Carlson's proposal during construction and afterwards. We all live on the same block as Mr. Carlson. We hope you all had an opportunity to review our letters to describe our perspectives on the proposal in detail. We're not a monolith, but we all oppose this project moving forward as it has been proposed, and we all agree that Mr. Carlson has not worked with us in good faith. At each of the two JPNC meetings on this project, the JPNC did not approve, rather instructed Mr. Carlson to come to an agreement with neighbors before coming back to the JPNC. We had a neighbor meeting with Mr. Carlson after the first JPNC meeting in October 2023. He dismissed all of our concerns and did not follow up with any proposed compromises, except for the January JPNC meeting. We did not hear from him again until two weeks ago, after he had been urged yet again to meet with us by our city councillor. He insisted that no more than four neighbors come to a meeting and then brought his lawyer without letting us know in advance we're introducing him as such. The meeting took place last Monday. After an hour, the only concrete concession we received was an 8:00 a.m. start time for construction. When Mr. Carlson sent an email with more concessions on Friday, even that had been locked back to an 8:00 a.m. start time only when drilling takes place. Every other concession in that Friday email was vague, self-serving, or didn't address a concern neighbors raised. Mr. Carlson apparently proposed to our city councillor a concession about designating a point of contact and email address for neighbor concerns, but he didn't bring it to the neighbors, so we had no opportunity to discuss or ask questions. None, no concession addressed the plans themselves. On the plans themselves, as neighbors, we differ in whether we oppose any building on this piece of frontage or oppose building two structures instead of one single-family home or one two-family home. However, we all agree that the proposed plan is too dense with the size of the parcel, overburdens some of the street's last remaining green space, and takes away too much of the street's parking. We urge you to reject the variance as another relief that Mr. Carlson requests today. Signed, Kristen Fribinski, Brenna Chase, Sam Chase, Paul Chen, Christina Churnia Fribisky, Sally Collins, Susan Eisenberg, Idonia Gabe, Rebecca Ginsburg, Greg Jones, Barbara Meyer, Jamie McMullin, Diane McMullin, Inez Meroli, Mark Meroli, Darcy Moore, Justin Moore, Justin Randalls, and Michael Weist. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have four additional raised hands here. I have to pick up if I have new information. Peter, you're unmuted.
I'm Peter Greco, currently at 21 Severn's Avenue, previously of 38 Rockview, where I resided for about six years. Just wanted to attest to the project and having gone through some of the construction that was aforementioned on the projects that were to the left and right of this project, this one falls in line with the character of the neighborhood, the space allotted for the projects flanking it. And the applicant has always been very, he's had a large amount of construction done on his property over the years, and he's always been very, very amenable, very, very responsive, and very, very neighborly. So I just wanted to voice in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I'm going to go to the, you want to keep going, Madam Chair? There are four additional raised hands. Let's charge the two more, and if the other two could, if the others can put your comments in the record. Okay. Sorry. Okay, we'll go to Inez and Dan Tanner. So Inez, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Inez Meroli, and I live right across the street from the area where the proposed construction is, 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 is the one that we discussed today. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Obviously, I'm part of everything that Rebecca stated. I want to make, point the attention to the fact that some of the information that we have received or that the applicant has presented to the neighbors have also been inaccurate and leads to some conclusions that are not correct. When we're talking about parking, parking is a big consideration for us. Like, we're right across the street. We're going to lose at least one parking spot, which we all need and use. There was some sort of assessment done by the applicant or someone in his team that concluded that parking in that area was used for people that were not residents of the street, which is inaccurate because, for instance, in our unit, it's a three-story, it's a three condominium with three apartments, and none of us have actually a parking sticker for the street, but we all use the street. In fact, two of our, you know, in the condo units, two of the cars are normally parked outside. So the reason why I'm bringing this up is because, as someone mentioned earlier, there is an abnormal size of the lot where the applicant currently leaves, and we believe that it will be in the benefit of the community if he actually decide or designed a parking for this unit in his existing space, right? Rather than taking one of the parking spots away from the, from the, from the community, specifically from, from all of us on 17 Rockview Street. Again, we feel that the size of the site does not support what is being planned to build in there. And I think I'm one of the people who supports going for one unit, a multifamily unit, but one unit that will be more in accordance to what you see on the street, and that will be not as disruptive to the neighbors who are planning to be there on the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Dan?
Hi, my name is Daniel Tanner. I'm of Brookside Ave in Jamaica Plain, an abutting area. I wanted to voice my support for the project on the basis of the need for this type of housing within our community. We've seen a large growth in large apartment buildings within the Jamaica Plain communities, such as those on Washington Street, which have been disruptive. And I'd like to see the addition of housing like this to maintain families within our community. And I think this is a good need, meets a good need for the community to provide housing that's beyond studios in one bedroom. So I'm in support of this on the need for housing for Jamaica Plain.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I just had kind of a question regarding snow. So my understanding is that it's not going to require extensive excavation of quarry stone that you're working with the existing landscape. What happens with snow at the rear of, you know, how do you, how do you remove that? Because it is kind of steep, and you have a very narrow kind of rear setback.
Sure, there is enough depth beyond parking to the elevated ledge to still be able to push it deeper into the lot. I don't necessarily have any concerns about snow problems.
What about water runoff into, into these thing, I mean, to the new proposed units?
From the rear structure down the ledge slowly?
Yeah, from the rear structure, yeah.
Yeah, from the rear structure, yeah.
I cannot, I mean, maybe the architect can speak as to that now, but I imagine...
What is the situation now in terms of water runoff? Like, is the, is the lot in front dry when it rains?
Sorry, I can speak to that at a high level, and Rick, the architect can fill away. I'm Sven, the homeowner, been there eight years now, have shoveled a lot of snow. So yeah, the existing home, basically, because it's such a sharp drop-off in the front, there really isn't like a lot of area for water to be collecting there. And most of the stuff that, sort of, the grade beyond it sort of flows off backwards, and you have other direction, and then you get flow sort of going down the driveway as well. From the existing property, you know, they're, it's, you know, obviously mostly grass, unused, and I'm there today. We did hire a drainage consultant at the rest of the neighbors to do an assessment, and their assessment was that the proposed construction, and I forget the specific reasons, but perhaps the architect can speak to it, is likely to improve the drainage coming off of that lot. So we did hire a drainage consultant to do that assessment.
Thank you. I was just, you know, I was looking at your drawings carefully. I mean, you know, just to hear, this is more kind of feedback to my colleagues. This is a very interesting kind of site location. Right across is zoned for three-family, 5,000, and then right on a property, you have a zoning of 2F, 7,000. And along that street, you do have these properties with this large lot of land. But across is a little bit much more dense. So in terms of the proposal, it feels in alignment to kind of the housing density that you see right across the street. In regards to density and story, you know, the presentation already showed that it was kind of in alignment to .6. I mean, we just approved a project that was 4.0 in terms of its FAR. So I was trying to like really understand what are the concerns of the community in terms of this, of this project. So I just wanted to kind of like give that feedback to my colleagues so they can assess the project. No further questions.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I elaborate on that briefly in commentary?
Let me just ask for the questions from the board first. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, very briefly.
So as a brief note, the rear butter was on the call, couldn't offer his support. We're at 2F, 7,000, across the street from the 3F, 5,000 sub-district. The request to have parking accessible off the existing drive requires us to move the footprint to our left, and that results in a greater amount of drilling required. So the single proposed removal of an off-street park, on-street parking space of the area four off is a byproduct of trying to work with the neighbors to minimize construction. So if you've heard, they're not opposed to any form of development. I think the majority of concerns are related to the actual construction process, and that is something that is construction in relation, not zoning in relation. So we are trying to have a resulting footprint that minimizes the amount of drilling, and that, we believe, is the kind of linchpin of opposition and concern of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, was that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
A second, then.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we'll move on to case BOA 1542615 with the address of 87 to 89 Notting Hill Road. If the applicant and the attorney, Marancy, was with us?
Yes, Mrs. Stemberich.
Would you explain to the board first?
Yes, Mrs. Stemberich, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent City Realty, Jacob Simmons and Josh Fetterman from City Realty are here with us today. This is an application to change the legal occupancy of the dwelling building at 87-89 Notting Hill Road in Brighton from two to six units with rear and veranda additions to the existing structure. The three lots comprising the site constitute approximately 8,027 square feet. This is a 2F, 5,000 zoning sub-district under Article 51. Tanya Carrier of Policy Design, the project architect, is also here today. I will first go through the zoning and then turn the presentation to Tanya to walk the board through the architectural drawings. In the relevant 2F zoning sub-district, the proposed six-unit use requires a variance. Despite the 2F zoning, there are several other quite large multifamily buildings in the immediate neighborhood, including at 63, 67, and 75 Notting Hill Road, as well as several on both Houston Road and Colborne Road. Relief is required for the proposed three parking spaces for the six units. The proposed parking ratio conforms with city transportation policy, and the site is located near the Sutherland Road stop on the MBPA's Green Line light rail. Relief is required for excessive floor area ratio. While the maximum FAR here is .6, what is being proposed is .85, which we believe is an appropriate density level, not inconsistent with the neighborhood average. The building's height is three stories and 39 feet, while zoning allows two and one-half stories and 35 feet, creating the need for two modest height variances. A front yard setback here is 20 feet, and the building is cited for a front yard setback violation. Mitigating this is the fact that what actually triggers that front yard violation is the creation of a proposed front porch measuring 7.8 feet wide by four and a half feet in depth. It is the four and a half feet of depth of this porch which creates the violation as the existing front setback is already legally nonconforming. There's a side yard setback violation only owing to the vertical addition of the existing right side of the, of the building where there is an existing setback nonconforming. The building is not being widened, but again, there's a vertical extension in an area where the side setback requirement is 10 feet, and the current condition, which is not being changed, is 9.9 feet. Finally, there's a rear yard setback violation. Required rear setback is 30 feet, whereas the proposed rear addition would result in a setback from the rear lot line approximately 15 and a half feet. Mitigating this is the fact that directly to the rear of the property is a large urban wild area. Now I'd like to turn it over to Tanya Carrier of Policy Design to walk the board through the architectural plans, and then we'll take any and all questions, comments, and concerns.
Thank you, everyone. Tanya Carrier of Policy Design, and go to the next slide, please. Our proposed addition is approximately 25 feet extending to the rear and 25 feet long. We are proposing three, two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units in stacked orientation, two per floor. The unit sizes range from 984 square feet to 1,025 square feet. And then for our exterior design, we did want to blend it in with the traditional style of the neighborhood. We proposed lap siding along with, mixed with the shingle siding on the dormers and gable and at the central entry area. We also propose a covered entry to protect from rain and ice on the stairway. And we did propose an accessible entry just below that stairway for the accessible dwelling unit, which has an internal lift. We also preserved the three-car garage bay and did a dormer style on the top. That's kind of the general overview, so I can turn it back to George.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Any questions or comments from the board? We'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, Madam Public Testimony?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted an abutters meeting for this project on November 21st, 2023. Abutters had concerns about parking, density, size, trash and rodent management. We received two letters of opposition from abutters that were sent to the board. One letter of opposition may have been sent to the Civic Association directly without reaching the board. The applicant presented to the Civic Association, the Brighton Austin Improvement Association, voted to oppose the project. That we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and I have a couple of raised hands more. Go ahead. And then Annabella?
Good afternoon, this is Marla Crayson, Councilor Braden's office. Councilor, with great due respect, in support of this project with the understanding that these units will be condo. Thank you.
Thanks. Annabella, and Patrick?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We voted not to support this project. There's just a little bit of confusion on some things and concerns with the density.
Thank you. Patrick, go ahead.
Hi, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. My name is Powell Bryant. I am a direct abutter to this project. I know they mentioned the urban wild that affects the rear yard setback, but my property located at 38-40 Houston Road is a direct abutter to them, and the current structure that exists there right now towers over my property. Just so the board can better understand, the street grade of Houston Road and the street grade of Notting Hill Road is approximately 45 feet in difference, and me being on the low side. The house that currently exists there is approximately 30 years old. I remember when it was built, and it was built to conform with existing zoning and density of the neighborhood. The proposal of six units is absolutely ludicrous. Notting Hill Road is, vast majority is two-family and single-family properties. There are a few multis up on that end of the street, but by far, the density of this project well exceeds, exceeds what's the density of the neighborhood. So my specific problems with it is the addition out the back that will encroach upon the rear yard setback, which will further injure, might concern my property. And the, even furthermore, the addition of a whole story on top of the existing structure, which already towers over the property, which would be blocking out like, the current house actually sits above the tree line at our, from, from our point of view. If I was to use...
Can you please wrap up their other raised hands?
Okay, so obviously, I'm in opposition, and it's specifically towards the dimensional and the density portions of the violations. And with that, I'll, I'll finish.
Thank you. P. Ching Lee?
Yes, I'm a father. I live across the street, and I have homes.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Paulie. I live across the street on Notting Hill. Can you hear me?
Yes, what's the full address?
72.
Okay.
So I have strongly opposed of construction. It's like a three, four-story, and it's going to just impact, you know, the light, you know, air. Construction will be significant noise and dust. I agree everything that Patrick O'Brien said, too. And there's also nine of property, there's not sufficient property. There's the neighborhood, there's other people popping on our street. So that would increase...
Thank you.
Jordan?
Hi there, Jordan Alexson of 85 Notting Hill Road. We are the direct to butters of the property at 87 through 89, and we just want to firmly and enthusiastically oppose this project for all of the reasons already stated. Our quality of life in the house directly next door will be drastically decreased due to this project. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make, I agree with the recommendation from the BPDA. I make a motion of approval with approval for the plans to be submitted to the Department of Parks and Recreation for review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair, also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I apologize. This is Sam. For our record, would you mind just repeating the proviso one more time for us?
Mr. Valencia, what was the proviso?
It's for the plans to be submitted to the Department of Parks and Recreation for review.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Valencia.
Thank you. Next case?
And before we head into the re-discussion, it's scheduled for 11:30. Since we're at 1:36, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from 1PM contract?
Yes, 131 Killscythe Road and 1-7 Selkirk Road, Ward 21.
So those would be case BOA 1548380 with the address of 131 Killscythe Road. And along with that is case BOA 1567789 with the address of 1 to 7 Selkirk Road. Would you explain to the board first?
Thank you, Ms. Stemberich. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano for the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant. In the matter, these are two companion cases. In the matter of 1-7 Selkirk Road, we were informed earlier this week by the Zoning Board of Appeal that there was a discrepancy on the notification that went out, and that would have to be re-advertized and re-notified. So we are seeking an administrative deferral. I believe a date was mentioned of potentially in May.
May 21st. Do you have a date for them?
Yes, throughout that.
May 21st.
May 21st, we're looking at this call. Great.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer the case until May, this case until May 21st?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
That was, not to interrupt you, Madam Chair, that was for the matter of 1-7 Selkirk. In the matter of 131 Killscythe Road, that has now become a zoning compliant project, so we are seeking a withdrawal of that case.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the withdrawal.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll ask again quickly if there are any more requests for withdrawals and deferrals from the law contract? Okay, the hearing done, we'll move on with the re-discution, it's scheduled for 11:30. The first case, 169 Maverick Street, was withdrawn. So that takes us to case BOA 1534938 with the address of 250 Gorman Street. If the applicant and or the representative is present, would they explain to the board first?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Stemberich, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins for the business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Talia Knistrada, who is the project architect. If we can jump down to slide two, please. Madam Chair, members of the board, this project site is located directly across from the Bremen Street Park. It's an existing vacant lot consisting of 4,000 square feet. In addition to being located directly across from the Bremen Street Park, the entranceway to the airport T Station is about 150 yards from the site. If you can go to the next slide, please. Our proposal looks to construct a new, will be mixed... Our proposal looks to construct a new, would be mixed-use, ground-level retail and eight residential unit building on the site. The reason we are proposing retail are twofold. First, this site is located just on the edge of the flood zone, so we are restricted to the type of uses that we can have on the ground level. We originally proposed to have a garage at the lower level with parking for six vehicles. We did hear through the community process that this site and its location of proximity don't want to airport T Station, but where it's located in East Boston neighborhood is somewhat of a desert for retail. So we were asked to consider incorporating a retail component in this building and our client agreed to do that in response to the neighborhood comments for this site. We feel that, you know, while retail is something that certainly would be important in the area, it presents a bit of a challenge for our client, but one that he feels he could certainly make work in connection with this project. I also want to point out that one of the comments that we did here during the community process was affordability. This project is not subject to IDP based upon the number of units. We are below the threshold of eight residential units. However, my client, in trying to again be responsive to some of the neighborhood concerns, is willing to offer one unit voluntarily as part of the IDP for this project. Next slide, please. So here's our street view showing the existing site. You can see the buildings located left and right. There is off-street parking that is used, but I would point out that this is not required off-street parking for any of the buildings that exist on Bremen Street. There's no zoning decision attached to this site that would require this parking remain. So for lack of a better term, I call this convenience parking and it is used in connection with some of the other properties along Bremen Street. But I just want to point out, I know it's important for the board, that this site is not tied to any specific site for required parking. Next slide, please. Just a different view here, the park would be on your left-hand side within walking distance of the East Boston YMCA as well as the East Boston Library. Next slide, please. Just a different view looking back up Bremen Street. Next slide, please. Just some examples of nearby construction, what's happening. And this is a good opportunity to mention that even though the site is currently in the three-F two-thousand zoning district, new zoning regulations moved this into the EBI four district. EBR four will allow for multifamily use, which we're proposing, as well as height of up to fifty feet and four stories. In addition, the FAR requirement is a limited EBR four. Next slide, please. So our proposed site shows our building, and again, this is important, also point out for purposes of setback. This is considered a shallow lot, so even though generally the new zoning would require a one-third lot setback, there's also the exception that allows for reduction in the rear yard setback requirement. So it's sort of a twofer when it comes to reduce rear yard setback for this area, including the properties that would be located in EBR four district. The side yard setback under new zoning would be five feet, which is actually an increase in the current setback requirements. We do comply with that and we're also respecting the modal setback, which will remain as an exception in the new zoning. Next slide, please. So just a rendering in context, we have some better renderings. Here's the cover sheet. We can probably jump down to the next slide to show the floor plan layouts. Next slide, please. So our ground-level retail is shown at the floor level. We also incorporate some space for building mechanicals and other items that are required for the building. There is the area for the lift and then you see the heat rest areas to the left side of the building. On the first level, the first living level, second level of the building, we have a mix of two one-bedroom and one two-bedroom unit. Next slide, please. On the third level, similar to the second level, a mix of two one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom. And then in response to comments that we heard in the community process, we've also incorporated two three-bedrooms on the upper level to provide a mix of unit sizes for this building. Next slide, please. We don't show any roof deck and this was in response to comments that we did here. There is access obviously for mechanicals, but no roof deck is being proposed in connection with this project. Next slide, please. So incorporating our elevations, I will point out, you know, the board may look at this and say the context of the area that other slide I showed you sort of shows the newer construction that's happening along Bremen Street. This would be compliant with respect to height, overall height. We can go up to fifty feet as well as the number of stories under the new zoning. So this is consistent with Plan East Boston recommendations. You can see here our left-side elevation as well as our front, rear elevation. Next slide, please. The other elevations, rear and right side, next slide, and just our section plan. So although we do require relief on the current provisions of Article fifty-three, the one area that appears to be of only concern for the BPD's recommendation, specific concern, would be the setback, but as I had mentioned, this being a shallow lot, the rule is allowed to be modified for setback because not only do we have the shallow lot, but the reduction of the one-third, to the reduction of the one-third setback, but the one-third setback is based on eighty feet, not the typical one-hundred feet. The remaining items that we typically are required to respond to under new zoning, our building lot coverage is slightly above the sixty percent that we're allowed to have under new zoning. However, I would point out that the idea to try to get as much of that retail space to make it work for a good tenant was important for the footprint of this building. We had gone through some reductions in the size of the building through the community process, but we feel that that's something that we would need in order to make that a viable retail space. We hate to build a retail space and not have it available for a tenant that would need that size of space. We do have available permeability, so even though our lot coverage is slightly above what is recommended of Plan East Boston, we do meet the permeability requirement, so we can easily provide thirty percent permeability on the site. And I know that's an important component of Plan East Boston recommendations. With that, I will pause and answer any questions by the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melina Viegomas with the Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for this project on September twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three. Four abutters were in attendance. One concern raised at this meeting was that a garage coming out onto Bremen Street might be dangerous and it would be better to have a retail space of some sort on the first floor. Additionally, it was mentioned that an abutter would like to see the building scaled back in the rear. The applicant met with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in September and October of two thousand and twenty-three. The group voted to support the project. Some folks at the, at this meeting shared concerns about parking being insufficient and the size of the building being too big. But on the other hand, a direct abutter to the project shared that they supported the project due to its proximity to the T and said that they would prefer a retail space on the first floor instead. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few raised hands. Second. Go to the council folks. Yeah, Sebastian or Joey the one.
Hey, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Councilor Politis's office. At this time, based on community support, the council would like to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Joe McGaffran, City Councilor. Aaron Murphy's office, we'd like to go on record in supporting this applicant.
Okay, and then raised hands, second, it is. Oh, I guess one raised hand, one second. Nicole? Send the request on mute, you. Good.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nicole Moran. I own two-forty-four Bremen Street, which is one house away from the proposed project. I just wanted to jump in and support the project. I think that this is the best use of the space that is there and any improvement to the neighborhood, I think it's going to be a benefit to all of us. So I just wanted to jump on and give my support.
Thank you. Okay, and I have no additional raised hands, thanks. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so, you know, here again, if Jeff Hampton is here, what the BPDA recommendation is?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. As with most of our East Boston recommendations prior to the adoption of the new East Boston zoning, we are trying to hold, have a hard hold on issuing variances for the new, new East Boston zoning. So that's the reasoning why we have rights and hours without prejudice. And as you have seen over the past couple of meetings, we're very consistent on this.
So I know that Council Coletta has been a big advocate for Plan East Boston and we hear that she and other councillors are in support of this project, but then again, it doesn't comply with the Plan East Boston, you know, it calls for three stories, not four. So, you know, just, just kind of what?
I'm sorry, it allows for four through the chair. I need to interrupt. This does allow for four.
It does allow to four? Okay, thanks for, Councilor. Thanks, Councilor Lynn, for that correction. Then it does count for four, so it does work within the Plan East Boston. And so I guess the BPDA was mostly then concerned with the FAR. Mr. Hampton?
Yes, that's correct, Ms. Bede Baraza. Also, you know, this recommendation hasn't changed because, you know, we made a recommendation three months ago on this. So we just have a steadfast recommendation on this one particular appeal.
Great, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bede Baraza, there's no, under the new zoning, there's no FAR? Right. So we're also, we're also aware that the project has changed and we're also aware of the IDP unit, but, you know, we're just holding steadfast on our appeals right now.
Okay, great. Thanks, ma'am, for the questions. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with BPDA design review with a proviso for the proponent to execute an affordability agreement with the Mayor's Office of Housing for that IDP unit targeting a lower area median income as possible, as possible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Oh.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
There we have case BOA one-five-four eight-three-six-one with the address of twenty-seven Mystic Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board first?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Sweeney. I'm an attorney with Morrissey Sweeney at two-six-one Main Street, Charleston. I'm here today on behalf of the owners of twenty-seven Mystic Street. Twenty-seven Mystic Street is an existing three-family dwelling and it currently has two one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom. My clients intend to, and if we can skip to sheet five, you can see there on the left, the existing. And what they are looking to do basically is fill in that L on the left to create additional space. So that shows existing floor plan for the first floor. This will allow all the units to be two-bedroom units. If we skip up now to sheet seven, on the third floor, currently there is a roof deck off of third floor, meaning that that unit now is currently about six hundred square feet. They would look to build on that roof deck as well as, as I said, fill in the area in the, in the L. The violations that we have, there is a proposed roof deck that's exclusive to the third floor unit. The exit tool is shown on the plans there, it is interior. The other violation is FAR. We currently have a one-point-eight-two and it will go to two-point-seven-nine. I do note that approximately five-hundred-and-forty feet of that additional space is gained in the basement where there will be a living area. We have had meetings with the abutters. One abutter was concerned with privacy issues and shade. We did commission a shade study that showed there was minimal disruption and with respect to that side of the building, we eliminated the windows. If we move back to sheet one, we can see the elevation facing the abutter who had, and on the left there is the elevation that would face the abutter. The existing three windows are there to the rear, as you see, there are no windows. That was done after the ONS mute. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Green with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held for twenty-seven Mystic Street on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, sorry, two thousand and twenty-three. Since that time, this office has received six letters in support and a petition in opposition with twelve signatures attached, which will oppose site possible noise pollution from the construction itself and worries about a loss of sunlight for neighbors when the project is complete. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Yep, Lena, go ahead, Lena. I sent the request on mute, too.
Hi, I'm actually Brazilian, from twenty-nine Mystic Street. So I am opposed to the project as expressed in my letter of testimony. I've lived at this home for thirteen years with my two teenage daughters. I work from home one-hundred percent of the time, every day, and I'm very concerned about the noise pollution that will come along with the project in addition to the interference with the privacy and the sunlight that I purchased this home many years ago, appreciating as part of the home's value. And I've invested heavily in plantings in my backyard that rely on that sunlight. So I know that the addition of this construction will definitely affect the quality of life that I currently have in addition to the resale value of my home. So for those reasons, I'm in opposition of the project.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? I have no additional raised hands. Any other questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
A motion of approval to BPDA designer review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA one-five-four eight-seven-nine-five with the address of one-eighty-nine West Fifth Street. The applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board first?
Thank you, Ms. Stembridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. On behalf of the applicant, Ina and Leo, and Eric Zacherson, Shiloh, and Eric Zacherson is the architect for the proposal. Just a bit of context, what you're looking at is an aerial view of the site. The yellow arrowed area is the highlighted empty lot at one-eighty-nine West Fifth Street. This particular zone is zoned for multifamily residential use and you can see the mix of housing stock within this area. If you go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This is just a height context chart. This particular area does allow for forty feet in height and mixed-use multifamily residential use. And you can see there are a number of threes, fours, and even some five-unit and apartment-style And you can see there are a number of threes, fours, and even some five-unit and apartment-style complex in the area. To the immediate buildings to our right and left are all three-family as you start to go down the street. And so based on that and based on the BPDA's recommendation, from the last time, we made a number of changes that I'd like to go over for the project. The new proposal is direct, a new three-story building on the lot with three residential units. The, based on what we heard from BPDA, we removed the fourth floor of the building. We reduced the height from 39 feet 10 inches to 34 feet 3 inches. We also removed the parking, which was at the ground level and would have caused the need for a curb cut. So that curb cut would now be restored. There would be no parking in the building, although we are, as it's mentioned in the recommendation, just a short 10-minute walk to Broadway T Station. In doing this, we reduced the FAR. And most importantly, we increased the rear setback from five feet to 12 feet, which also preserves the tree and the rare of the out. If we go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, we actually show a site pic. So you can see there, there was a tree in the back. We're asked to maintain as many trees as possible. And although there is a tree in front, and it'll be PDA asks that we either try to move that into the back or plant a new tree, which we would be happy to do as well. The, the new plan is to have just a basement with unfinished space and mechanical. You can go on to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. Unit one would house a 699 square foot one-bedroom. Unit two, 757 square foot two-bedroom. And unit three, 878 square foot two-bedroom unit. And you can see in this particular site plan are now increased rear setback with green space shrubbery and the trees in the rear. Just to go over some of the variants that are still needed. We would, we meet lot area, additional lot area with frontage FAR. And then height is well below what's required. We would still be required to have usable open space variance being at 394.5 total. And then front yard and side yard and rear yard, we would still have a variance needed being at 12 feet with 20 required. And off-street parking would still have, we'd need a parking variance. And as I mentioned, we are very close to the T Station. We did submit a number of abutter letters from our direct neighbors on either side and a few down. And then so doing with our changes, we also removed the roof deck on the top of the building by taking off the fourth floor. So there is no longer a roof deck on the building as well. And with that, I can pause and answer any questions of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Questions from the board? Hearing none may have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutter's meeting was hosted in September of 2023, in which during, during time, during that time, one attendee stated concern over the removal of an existing tree and the impacts on historic foundations surrounding the site. Another expressed concern over a new curb cut and insufficient parking per the proposal. Additionally, our office received one letter of opposition from a direct abutter stating concerns over the transition from the open space, green space, to residential and the additional burden of on-street parking demand. And our office received no additional concerns. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura, speaking for Coastal Swims' office. Coastal Swims would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors in good faith compromises throughout the process, including removal of the top floor and the front deck to bring in the building down to 34 feet, as well as increasing the rear back, rear seat back, setback, sorry, from five feet to 12 feet, to also preserve a mature tree. It is our understanding the other mature tree will be preserved as well. We ask that the team continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
I have no additional reasons.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion? May I have a motion from the board?
A motion of approval to BPDA designer review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1522524 with the address of 79 West Milton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Justin Burns of Pulgeni and Norton, business address 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts. Here on behalf of the applicant, Samantha Jean, and with me today is also the partner of our firm, John Pulgeni. Just for reference, the zoning in this sub-district is 1F6,000 and the lot size of this specific lot is 10,256 square feet. This is a proposal for a change of occupancy from a one-family to a three-family, including an additional dwelling unit. The existing home is a three-story one-family consisting of 11 bathrooms and eight, or sorry, 11 bedrooms and eight bathrooms. Just to explain the abnormally large structure, considering the neighborhood, it was originally constructed in 1875 as a rectory for the nearby church and has since been transitioned to a single-family home. As existing, the basement in the single-family dwelling is unfinished. This proposal would include finishing that basement to create the ADU and transitioning each of the above-grade floors into their own individual dwelling unit. Outside of a new entry door and a window well, there would be no exterior changes proposed. The unit mix would be as follows. The ADU in the basement would be three beds, one bath. Unit one on the first floor would be four beds, three baths. Unit two on the second floor would be four beds, four baths. And unit three on the third floor would be three bed, three bath. We found this to be an adaptive reuse of a historical building that would allow a multi-generational family to live together but with a sense of individuality. And considering it's so close to transit, it would be a good opportunity for the city to improve the housing stock of the area. So with that, I'll pause for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on November 28th of 2023. Their neighbors expressed concerns with this proposal citing that it didn't fit in with the character of the neighborhood. They felt some members in attendance there, community members, expressed that they would feel comfortable if this was a two-family moving forward because there are other two families in this neighborhood. But they felt that jumping to a three-family with a potential ADU in the basement would be too excessive and would set a precedent for changing the neighborhood as it was. We did receive one letter in opposition after that meeting with another community member raising similar concerns and liking to see it fitting with the character of the neighborhood and expressing concerns regarding density. There was other concerns, I think, that were shared with our liaison, that it might turn into a boarding house. We understand the applicant is committed to having their family stay on the site. They did go on to meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, which ultimately felt that they did not want to see in addition of three families to this particular part of Hyde Park, and they voted to oppose the proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, caller. Yep, I'm 617364. Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Craig Martin with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. And as, as the gentleman just referred, it was brought to our association. And we had heard from the abutters that why, why can't a two-family with, with the ADU, in fact, three units be adequate on this site? It is, it should be noted that this parcel is sandwiched in between industrial warehouses in the back and a very busy West Milton Street right in the front. It's screaming for open space. Doesn't have barely enough for three families.
Madam Chair?
Don't know why a two-family.
Yes, ma'am. Cable needs to take a break. They're having tech issues. Okay, so we need to take a break? Yes, please. Okay, uh, I'm sorry, caller. Apparently we need to take a, a break due to technical issue. So we will come back to you. Stephanie, how long do we need?
Thank you kindly.
Do we know how long we need? To be determined. I'm not sure. Oh, boy. Okay.
I'm calling, I'm calling cable now, Madam Chair, to see how long the break would be.
Okay, well, so can we not have testimony while that's happening? No, because they might not capture it. Okay, so sorry, sir. We're on pause.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
President?
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Wuwol?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
All right, thank you for everyone's patience. I think we were in the middle of an abutter commenting. So I don't know if our abutter is still present. Apologies again. Is our, and I don't remember his name, so, okay, here we go. Yes, sir.
Okay, you can't hear me, okay.
Okay, so sorry about that and thank you for your patience. Please carry on.
I understand. I appreciate you. I appreciate you taking me back. Yeah, with Craig Martin with Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. Like the abutters, we had concern with the density. And as I said, I hate to repeat myself, but this parcel was sandwiched between industrial warehouse zone behind it and a busy West Milton Street in front of it. It's screaming for usable open space. Even though if you make it a two-family with an ADU, it still wouldn't be nearly enough open space. It's more appropriate than this four units, three, three-family with the ADU.
Okay.
We're requesting that this, that this be diminished in density.
Thank you.
And I will put as a little side note, since the attorney did bring it up, I think this might be beyond the purview of this board. But since he brought up the ADU, should be noted that the owner on record from City Hall is shown as a residence in Roslin Dale. And of course, to have an ADU.
Understood.
The property must be owner-occupied.
All right, thank you, sir. We're gonna.
So I hope you can recognize that and I.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Newman?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I also just had the applicant forward for me five letters of support, which I believe the board has access to. Some of them appear to be abutters on West Milton, as well as, I think, a letter from State Rep Rob Consalvo. So I just wanted to add that for the record.
Thank you.
Continue to refer to the board. Thank you, sorry.
No problem. Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Nope, I have no raised hands.
Okay.
I just addressed some of the issues were raised by the last caller.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there are no other questions from the board because you might as well answer them all at once. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I noticed in the BPDA recommendation, there was something about increasing usable open space. However, my understanding is this project is largely internal changes with some window wells. So I was curious where, what the BPDA was, you know, focusing on with that comment.
I could address.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Great. And can you also just clarify the, the number of total units? Because, you know, one thing says one to four units with the ADU. One says one to, one to three with an ADU. So just to re-clarify everything.
Sure. As far as what the programming of this proposal is, it is currently a single-family former rectory for St. Anne's Parish. It is a 14-bedroom, 11-bathroom building. It's huge, much bigger than any house on the street. There's no exterior changes to this. The, there is three units, so each floor, it's a three-story building. Each floor will be made into individual units. And the basement is the ADU, the ADU unit, which you, as you all know, does not transfer to any new purchaser of this property. This is all family, contrary to what Mr. Martin said, who does not in a butter to this project. He lives almost three-quarters of a mile away from it. Is, they are all family. It's a Haitian family who lives together. They've been supported by both the district counselor as well as the state representative in that area, as well as several other abutters. The argument about open space, again, nothing is changing on this building. It is staying today the same as it will be. And if this project's approved in three months from now, it's going to look exactly the same. To address Ms. Whitwell's, Wuwol's comments we got in the BPDA, because in the rear of this building, there's a tremendous amount of parking and they have at least seven parking spaces. The BPVA, as far as the open space, the only way to increase open space would to be cut back on some of that parking. So that's where they were saying. So we have over 1,300 square feet per unit of open space. Because it's a single-family zoning district, the requirement's 1,800 square feet. To the right of this building, literally 100 feet away from this building, is a project of 247 units that has just been approved. Behind this building, as Mr. Martin stated, it is where the city of Boston keeps their buses. If you guys are on your pads and you can see what's behind it, that's exactly what it is. It's underneath the Sprague Street Bridge. Again, nothing is changing. It is owner-occupied.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pulgeni. We, I think we understand. Uh, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
All right, Nancy.
Madam Chair, I like to put for a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the hearing scheduled for 1:00 PM. The first hearing is case BOA 1571297 with the address of 50 Princeton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Ms. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicants, David Hannigan and Eric Pally. And also we have Eric Zacherson, who is the architect on the proposal. Madam Ambassador, if you could just go up a little bit so they can see the rendering. Thank you very much. So this is a proposal at 50 Princeton Street. It's, we're looking straight ahead. It's the rendered building to the left, very similar to the building next to it that it's attached to. And the proposal is to change the occupancy from a two-family, and it had an ADU unit, to a three-family building. These would be proposed condos with a rear and vertical addition to the building and with two interior parking spaces accessed through a curb cut on the front of the building. Just to, if we go to the next slide, please. This is existing conditions of the building. You can see very similar details in the building on the right and the left. You can see in the building on the right, there's additions on the right and top floor. Those are similar additions, a little bit larger, that we're proposing to the building. When we started this process and working with neighbors, Eagle Hill Civic Association, obviously we filed under the prior zoning code, but we now would fall, obviously, under the Plan East Boston. And we're going to show you, we meet almost all of that criteria under the Plan East Boston. The, when we started, we were at four units. We had a front addition as well. And we had roof decks and front decks on the proposal. As we went in meeting with the neighbors, we changed this to three units, two interior parking spaces, and the rear and vertical additions that we showed you in the rendering a little bit earlier. The particulars of the, of the project under the new Plan East Boston um, because we're keeping the existing building. This building is not being raised. We're just building on it with the additions. The ridge of this roof would remain exactly the same, um, at thirty-nine feet. And so, uh, there, there was some confusion or mistake in the recommendation from the BPDA. I did speak to Mr. Hampton about it. Um, incorrectly labeled this project as falling under an EBR two and a half. And all of Eagle Hill falls under an EBR three, which would allow for three units or an EBR four. In this case, which falls under the majority of Eagle Hill, is an EBR three. So we would be in line with the unit count at three units that we're proposing. Um, and also, uh, we would meet the minimum lot coverage, which is sixty percent. We would be at forty-seven point eight-five. Our max building width is at twenty-seven point two, which falls under the fifty-foot. Uh, max building depth is seventy. We're at sixty-five point four. Max building floor plate, couldn't go over three thousand. We're at fifteen hundred thirty-nine. We are also, we meet, we exceed the front yard max. Um, front yard minimum, uh, is three. We're at twenty-four. And again, these are existing conditions as the building stands now. Um, we did, uh, the building, as you can see, uh, has housed two parking spaces, but they were in the front yard. Uh, and in hearing from the neighbors, obviously, uh, they wanted us to keep the parking somewhere in this building for concerns Eagle Hill. There's a huge parking issue. Um, so what we did, as we worked this project through, we removed all livable space in the basement. And we were able to house two full-size parking spaces. And we vetted that through, uh, Bob D'Amico as well, who asked us to have some mechanism on the garage door just to notify passersby when cars are exiting or entering, uh, the garage of the building. Um, and, uh, when we get into, if you go to the next slide, uh, Madam Ambassador, um, you can just see, this is just an aerial view, so you can see the size and scope of the buildings around us, which we match or are below in height. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. And now we get into the plans. And so the, uh, just to go over the floor plans, if you go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, um, level one would just house two interior parking spaces. Um, and you can see there's already, uh, uh, an area to pull in, so it'd be curb cut. Um, uh, proposed paved area, a little bit of a patio, green space, and then, um, the entrance for, for two spaces. If you go to the next slide, please. Uh, Madam Ambassador, if you could go to the next slide, thank you. Uh, those are existing conditions. If we go to the next slide, we get into the proposed floor plans. Uh, these units, uh, would all be two-bedroom. Uh, this is a good slide. Uh, this just shows you, uh, existing. Um, you can see how our building lines up, uh, with all the other buildings, uh, in the immediate area from forty-eight to fifty-six Princeton Street. Uh, you go to the next slide, please. Um, these units are all two-bedroom. Uh, level one is the parking spaces, level two, twelve hundred and fifty square foot two-bed. Uh, three is twelve twenty-five square foot two-bed. And then finally, uh, the top floor is twelve hundred and seventy square foot, uh, two-bedroom unit. Um, we also, uh, submitted thirteen letters of support from direct abutters. And we're happy over a period of time to get the Eagle Hill Civic Association's, uh, support for this project as well. Um, all of that support was, was very much contingent on retaining some parking, uh, to go along with this building as well. I can pause and, and answer, or myself or Eric can answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Melo Villagomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted in a butters meeting for this project on October fourth and December sixth of two thousand and twenty-three. Many of the concerns brought up were about the shade this project would provide to the abutting property and the opposition for a building that juts out of the adjacent property. In two thousand and twenty, in January two thousand and twenty-three, the Eagle Hill Civic Association took a vote on the project. The group voted to support with fifteen in favor and three opposed. Throughout this process, O N S received five letters in opposition that have been forwarded to the board, stating the need for parking and the disapproval of increased density. The direct abutter has expressed many concerns as well about the safety of this project and the disruption of their quality of life. However, most recently, O N S did receive a letter of support from State Representative Adrian Modero, stating that the Eagle Hill support of this project is contingent on the approval of the pro, of the project's two parking spaces due to the continued parking issues that residents raise, given the density of Eagle Hill. And, um, he stated his support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, do you have one raised hand? Oh, sorry, another one popped up. Um.
Joe McGeckren?
Joe, yeah.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McGeckren, City Councilor, Erin Murphy's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Steve?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the boards. Abasham Parra from Councilor Politis's office. The council would like to go on support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve? Hi, Steve, you're muted. Hi, Steve, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Okay, have no additional raised hands. I'm not sure what, what's happening with Steve's audio.
Uh, with that, may I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is Steve still trying to speak?
Let me try him one more time. Steve, I sent a request on you. You can.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
I'm sorry about that. My name is Steve Lemus. I live at fourteen Princeton Street. I am a butter to the project. I would like to just go on record in support. I think it's a sound project. The off-street parking, in my opinion, makes sense. And I think it aligns with, uh, you know, the future of East Boston. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion of approval with BPDA review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case B O A one-five-five-two-eight-three-four with the address of three seventy-four Athens Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, will they explain the case to the board, please?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand, please? David? Don't see any raised hands.
Okay, well, let's keep moving forward.
And we'll, we'll, we'll come back to them. Um, now we have case B O A one-five-seven-one-one-nine-four with the address of one eighty-one E Street. If the applicant, if this applicant and or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Hi, I am Mr. Stembridge. Uh, this is attorney Mike Ross. Uh, on behalf of the, uh, applicant, hello to Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, here with the building owner, Bill Davis. Uh, rather, I'm sorry, the next-door building owner, Bill Davis. Bill also owns this lot, um, which is directly next to his home and where he lives. Um, this is a, uh, empty parcel located in a multifamily sub-district, uh, of South Boston. And, uh, what we're seeking to do is do a one-family home for his daughter, uh, who is a, uh, third-generation South Boston resident to move into. Um, Mr. Davis lives in the corner building, uh, as you see right there. And then the lot itself is directly to the, well, if you're standing to the left of it, if you're standing on E Street in front of it. If you go to page five, which is a, a, a couple down, um, we, we made some recent, uh, Madam Ambassador, thank you. Yeah, this is fine. Uh, as you can see, we made some recent edits to the plans, uh, which is why you see the bubbles and the notations made by the plans examiner. We reduced, um, the F A R to compliant, and we were able to achieve the open space requirement as well. Um, I'll walk you through the zoning violations in a second. Let me just quickly take you through the, the property here. Uh, next, uh, next page, Madam Ambassador, if you could. So here are just the floor plans. Uh, it's a, a, a three, uh, three-level house, uh, starting with the left, which is the parking area. A curb cut, uh, directly off of E Street, which is at the bottom of your page. Uh, there are two floors above. The second floor, and combined, the entire unit is, is thirteen twenty-three square feet. That second floor there, uh, contains the living area and the kitchen area and half-bath. And then the third floor contains, uh, two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Next slide, please, Ambassador. Uh, here we show the front elevation and rear elevation. The bubble there is in reference to just a small area of, uh, overhang that was hanging between the three-foot, one-inch passageway between both buildings. Uh, previously, the second and third floor overhung about a foot, uh, foot and a half to the right. And what we did is we pulled it back in and or to allow for, uh, open space. And that allowed us to make that, uh, open space, uh, calculation. So that was the minor change there. Um, next slide, please. And then these are just your side elevations. What you have is a slightly smaller base pedestal with the front and rear slightly protruding over, and then both side elevations. As you'll know, there's no windows, uh, to account for their, uh, you know, that there's no, uh, uh, that their proximity of the property line. Uh, slides nine and ten show you the, uh, just the next, uh, slides, Ambassador. So they show you just, just renderings to give you a sense of how this building will fit into the context of the other properties on E Street. Um, this, this was the, uh, a rendering we did just prior to making that small change of the massing on the right side of the building. Otherwise, it's completely the same. We just wanted to show the board, just to give them a sense of what, you know, how it will fit. The, the next slide just shows you from what it looks like off, uh, West Ninth Street. Uh, the corner there, you can kind of see the back of it there from, from that, uh, side street as well. Uh, the, the, the other pages afterwards show you the previous plans that we had before the changes, so they're not important. I can take you quickly through the zoning relief, which is back, uh, on the first page with the refusal, Madam Ambassador. Um, that's so, so as mentioned, this is a smaller, yes, Madam Chair?
I was just gonna ask, I'm sorry. I may have missed it. How, how many parking spaces is that garage for?
One, just one parking space.
Okay.
Requires a one-point-five, as you know, uh, and, uh, this is, uh, one.
Thank you.
Uh, the other zoning relief, uh, since this is a smaller lot, this is a seven hundred fifteen square foot lot in a two-thousand with a lot width of eighteen point nine-two, where a twenty is required. Uh, as a result of that exceptionally small parcel, uh, it produces that hardship, which, uh, allows for, uh, variances to be considered. Those additional variances would be the side yards, as I've mentioned, that would be one-point-nine feet in a three on one side, and then zero, it's on the lot line on the left side. The front yard, uh, setback is at zero in what's required of five, although zero is more common on this street. Uh, parking, as I mentioned to the chair, is a, a one in a one-point-five. And then the, uh, rear yard in the shallow lot requires fifteen, and we're at eight-point-six-seven. So I can pause there and answer. Oh, I'll just mention also, uh, the BPDA, uh, wired a, uh, sorry, the BPDA, uh, provided a recommendation for approval, and we also submitted several letters of support as well. Pause there.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was hosted on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, during which time attendees were generally in favor of this proposal. Our office has since received fifteen letters of support from abutters in the community and one letter of support from the Andrews Square Civic Association. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Council, we would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and positive feedback from neighbors in the City Side Neighborhood Association. Council respectfully asks that the team continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you.
And, okay, we have four raised hands. Um, oh, well, three now. I'll go to Bill and then Dave.
Let's, let's just be quick. We have a long day.
Yeah.
Hello, Madam Chair and, uh, board members. Uh, thank you for your time, uh, to hear my building proposal. Uh, I have owned this property for over.
I'm sorry, we're here, we're, we're here for, this, this is the comment period for abutters and, uh, not the. Thank you.
Sorry, Dave?
Yes, hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, David Byrne, homeowner, Seven Cottage Street, South Boston, uh, neighbor and abutter to Bill Davis. Um, I completely support this project. Bill and his daughter Kelly are outstanding neighbors. They've always been great to the community. And, um, I'm, yeah, um, I'm glad to see a proposal like this throughout the city, especially with all of the, um, the overdevelopment that's been going on. So I appreciate Bill and his family for doing this. I think it looks great, and I, and I, uh, definitely support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan?
Good afternoon. I just want to second what Dave said. Uh, I'm also an abutter at One Cottage Street. And, uh, like I said, a lot of, a lot of the development going on in the neighborhood is, you know, above and beyond the, the wishes of the neighborhood. And this, uh, definitely fits in to what, to what we like, and, um, just to, to keep another neighbor, good neighbor is, uh, is definitely a benefit for the neighborhood. So we'd like.
Sorry. Helena?
Hi, my name's Helena Berry. I live at Nine Frederick Street in South Boston, also a neighbor of Bill and his daughter Kelly's. And, um, I am on board with Brian and Dave, my other neighbors. I think this is great for our neighborhood. They're great people, and they're making enough to keep their family here, which we don't see a lot in our neighborhood anymore with all these large buildings going up. So I just wanted to note that I am absolutely for it.
Thank you. Have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
I'm, I'm gonna vote no, just because I think this side yard setback should still remain at three feet.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Next, we have case B O A one-four-nine-three-five-seven-zero with the address of eighteen Albion Street. If the applicant and or, or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attorney Kim Dooley from the law firm of Dean Torpey with a business address of one seventy-five Federal Street, Suite fifteen-hundred. I have with me attorney Tim Fraser and the owner, Mr. Broderick Egojimare, the manager of Joy Builders LLC. Eighteen Albion Street is located within the Roxbury neighborhood, is a three-family residential dwelling with an additional dwelling unit. The next slide, please. The, the, the project does not require any new construction. The three units, along with the ADU, are already constructed and in existence. The application for a change in occupancy triggered zoning code violations for the pre-existing building, including lot area, usable open space, F A R, and off-street parking. The applicant is seeking to change the use and occupancy from a three-family dwelling with an ADU to a four-family dwelling unit. The applicant initially intended for his son to live in the ADU apartment. However, his son lost his job and was forced to move out of state. I'd like to highlight that this unit has two points of ingress and egress, including the front entrance and the rear entrance. The rear entrance has a short staircase with five or six steps leading directly to the rear yard of the property. The unit has four large window wells, which can also act as emergency points of exit. The unit has eight and a half, uh, foot ceiling height. The applicant conducted a robust community project, uh, process, including in a butters meeting on September twenty-eighth, and also met with the Dudley Street Initiative on February twenty-second. We have received twenty-two petition signatures in support of the change of this request. Based on this information, we respectfully request the board grant the various variances. Based on this information, we respectfully request the bor- board grant the various variances, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And so just to confirm that, that this is, this is uh already built, there's no changes to what was already built, correct? You're just changing from the ADU to the fourth unit?
Yes, um, as you can see from the photos, um, the it's in existence.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, Office of Neighborhood Services had in a butters meeting on uh September twenty-eighth. Uh, the proponent also met with the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative's uh Sustainable Development Committee. Um, the civic decided uh not to oppose the project, but also did not write a letter in support. Uh, beyond that, we're unaware of any concerns at this time, like to defer to the board. Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval.
Now the second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Next, we have three companion cases. First is case BOA one four six zero nine eight five with the address of fifty-three fifty-three to fifty-seven Erie Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one four six two one one zero with the same address of fifty-three fifty-seven Erie, Erie Street. If the applicant and their or their representative is present?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. Board, my name is Simon Demarcini. I am a uh pastor of the church. And uh, I'd like to give you an a background about uh uh a proposal of the of the, of the project. If you go to uh slide six, please. Well, that's good, uh. This is the this is, is that slide six about the previous slides? Where it says project overview? Or that, that should be fine, that should be fine. Okay, well, this is uh, this is the uh proposed uh addition that we have on the that we propose to the city to uh to put on the, on top of the roof of the church. This is the facade, and these are the three sides that we propose. Next slide, please. Uh, in the proposed, in the proposed uh addition, we plan to build uh two bathrooms, one office, uh, one storage room plus additional space uh uh for the activities that we have at the church. Uh, and this is the, uh, this is the d- the drawing plan of, of the purpose uh uh construction that we, we submitted to the city. Next slide, please. Is that the, next slide, please. Next slide, please.
The last slide.
That was this last slide. Can you go up, please? Uh, from the slide.
So maybe we can pause and just see if there are questions from the board?
Okay.
There any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one, I have one question. I want to know exact, cause I'm sort of somewhat familiar with Erie Street. I want to know exactly where this church is located at.
The church is located uh in the area of Four Corners uh on Erie Street. It's, it's, it's at the intersection of Silver Street. If you come off Silver Street and you turn right, the church is the, the only church on the right on, on uh, on Erie Street.
Is that, is that somewhat close to the corners, that store that's on Erie Street?
No, it's below that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Well, I, I have.
I'm sorry.
Questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jeff Hampton, did BPDA review this project?
Uh, yes, Ms. Better Baraza, we are recommending approval.
Okay, so um, I, for some reason, I didn't see that recommendation on my package. Um, did others see that recommendation on their package?
So they, they list several, Ms. Better Baraza.
I just want to, I want to make sure that, I wanted to make sure I un- I understood. So that being said, I just need clarification because there are two. So the first one is um fourteen six oh nine eight five, and then the other one seems like it's addressing some building codes, fourteen six two one one zero. Are we commenting not on the building code, but on the proposal itself for fourteen six oh nine eight five? So I guess that's a question for Norman. So we can put a motion forward that distinguishes these two issues.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Maybe Mr. Hampton can clarify, the recommendation was for both companion cases, correct?
We don't make recommendations on building.
Exactly.
We only make it on the zoning, so for the zoning portion of this, we're recommending approval.
Uh, and, and that relates to the case number, cause I think only one case number, or maybe I'm, maybe I missed.
It's two one four six zero nine eight five.
Correct, okay.
Correct.
Great, and Norman, did you read the other case number or no?
Yeah, yes, I did.
You did, okay, great. So I just wanted to make sure that we clear the two in terms of the recommendations. Okay, excellent. I think you just clarified. I think you, uh, Mr. Hampton.
Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, don't have a ton of information. We've gone through some personnel changes. Um, we're unaware of any concerns at this time. Um, we don't imagine there would be any. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised?
Yep, some raised hands here. Richard sent a request, unmute you. Richard, are you looking to give, oh, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a public hearing on this by City Hall. So uh, it's sad that you guys don't have notes on that hearing. Um, I am i- in opposition of this um, um, proposal. I live uh right next door, I'm sorry, I'm at um fifty-two Hewan Street in Dorchester. And um, I'm right next door to the church. Uh, my kitchen is looking out right at the church. And um, if they put a second story on there, then it will totally block all the light um that comes into my kitchen. I'm retired, I'm home in the mornings, I come out and I'm here. Um, also, my concern is that um you know, how are they gonna gain access to the roof to build it? Um, because they haven't talked to our civic, I'm sorry, to our condo association about using our backyard. And they've used the backyard on other small projects, but they still left stuff back there. So I just have major concerns about that, about um the lack of light. Um, my view is totally gonna be gone of the sky. I will see absolutely nothing but two stories of wall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, madam.
Ryan?
Terms of the board. Thank you. My name is Ayame Nwewo, the Office of City Council, Brian Willwell. And in regards to this project, the proponent never met with the Civic Association, Ari Ellington, and they never met with our office. But that being said, the council likes to move forward with recommendation of deferral for further community engagement.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
So um, I would like to make a motion of, that takes both the building code and the zoning together, um, and I'm gonna put forward a motion of approval with two proviso. One, that the project undergoes BPDA design review for the second floor massing um, in regards to whether it needs to set back. Um, and then the second uh proviso is that no building code be granted.
Building code relief, yeah, okay.
No building code relief be granted for the ones that they're seeking release for.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
And, and I, I just want to make a comment that the applicant should um consult with an architect because a lot of the violations can be resolved, um, if an, if an architect's a system.
Thank you. All right, next case?
Next, we have case BOA one five six five three four five with the address of ten ten to ten twenty William T. Morrissey Boulevard. If the applicant and or their representative is present, will they explain to the board first?
It's Patrick McNichols.
Gordon, okay, have a good night. Yeah, Gordon, are you on to this proposal?
Hello, Madam Chair, board members, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, sir.
My name is Gordon Johnson, and I currently own Milkweed Restaurant in Mission Hill. I'm here with my contractor, Pat McNichols. And we wish to operate uh the Milkweed Concept at ten ten Morrissey Boulevard. It's the old Boston Market space. And it involves basically some cosmetic work and change of layout to the dining room. Initially, we thought we could um apply for a short form permit with the building department, but they alerted us to the fact um that the Boston Market people were zoned for uh drive-through, which we uh, I have no experience of at all, and so we need the long form permit, and that's why we're here today. We wish to move forward and not operate a drive-through at that location at all.
Okay, uh, questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ross Cocker in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we'd like to defer to the board judgment. At this time, our office did not think it was necessary to host an butters meeting regarding this just simply because of the uh drive-through and what the new proponent is looking to do. Uh, likewise, I have no letters of support or opposition on file at this time, and the Civic Association does not have a letter of support or opposition on file as well. So at this time, we'd like to defer to this board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Ramus from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members.
Next case has been withdrawn, one behind that has been deferred, which brings us to case BOA one five seven one two zero seven with the address of seventy-seven Bigelow Street. If the applicant and their and or their representative is present, will they explain first?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quilty, Miller and Hanley, zoning and permitting attorneys for the project. Uh, with me today is Bob Invasili-Boostres, who are the project proponents from seventy-seven Bigelow Street Realty Trust, and David O'Sullivan, who's the project architect. Uh, Madam Ambassador, I believe they are both in as attendees. I wonder if you could maybe add them as um panelists while I start. Um, uh, next, and also, sorry, next slide, if I may ask for that as well, thank you. So this is just um some existing conditions in context plan. Uh, they purchased this uh site uh just north of Oak Square in March of twenty twenty. You can see it here on the map in the yellow highlight. Uh, they are a Brighton-based family. They do run their business in the neighborhood and have a few properties in the neighborhood, so they are familiar with the area. Um, the site, as you can see here, it's a pretty deep lot. It is oversized. It's approximately fourteen thousand square feet in size, and we are in a two F five thousand zone. So it's almost three times the size of the new lot size. There's also a, you'll see in some of these, especially the top left image here of the site, there is a uh existing two-family that they are keeping and adding on to. They are not demolishing this two-family, they are looking to add to it. And there is uh a fifteen-foot grade change um from the right front corner to the left rear corner of the site. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and I think David, are you on? Is David is in as an attendee. Um, I'll keep going, Madam Chair, I know it's been a long day for you, so I don't want to wait for him. But if, if, whenever David's on, if he could jump in. Uh, however, you could see here, uh, this is the existing, uh, this is the, the plot plan. You could see the existing two-family hatch there, and then the proposed three-story uh um addition to that, uh, to make, to have this go from a two-family to a five-family uh dwelling with five off-street parking spaces, so one per unit. Uh, next slide, please. Madam Ambassador, thank you. Uh, this is just a site plan. Um, you can start to see how the addition fits into the overall si- uh size of the lot. Um, I do note that there was a, the BPDA recommendation, which I'm sure will come up from Ms. Better Baraza, about trees and uh onsite trees. Um, if the Madam Ambassador zooms in, you can see the uh top tree right above the parking is the tree in question. That tree will remain, that is in the BPDA recommendation asking about that. The plan is for that tree to remain onsite um and not to be uh uh harmed or removed from the construction. Uh, we also uh plan to, the top three trees uh on this site plan are new. It would be proposed new trees, and then also the trees on the side lot line on the right-hand side of this image uh are also new trees screening and buffering as part of the project. And if Madam Ambassador would scroll down a little bit, you could see the, the, the overall uh plot plan and site plan. You could see how this is an existing driveway, and we would be tucking four of the parking spaces underneath the building, uh, the addition, and then there would be one surface site at the rear, again, for one-to-one parking ratio for these uh new units. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, again, this is just a site plan showing the first floor, the garage spaces, one, two, three, and four. There also will be bike and storage uh on that ground level uh as well for the units. Uh, next slide, please. Starting to see some front elevations, you can see the existing building there at the front, and then tucked behind it, you will start to see uh how the addition uh comes into play. Uh, next slide. Uh, right side elevation, you can see bubbled out the addition uh which is slightly above uh the existing conditions at the site now for the existing two-family. Uh, next slide. And Madam Chair, of course, I'm going pretty quickly. I know it's been a long day, but happy to go back to any of these.
Of course.
Rear elevation, uh, next slide. And this is the left side elevation, uh, which has uh hardwood, you know, kind of coming from Hardwick Street, which is the side street. There are houses on the side, so they would be in, in the way of this view. However, you can start to see the garage door entrances tucked under the building. Uh, and again, there is a fifteen-foot grade change, so we're trying to utilize that grade change as much as possible for parking and uh things of that nature. Uh, next slide. Uh, again, this is just a section through the site. You could see the existing house beyond, and then the uh addition as well, um, showing how they all relate to each other. Uh, next slide. So this is our refusal letter, Madam Chair. This is probably, we have a few renderings, but this is pretty much the last slide. So what we don't need set relief for is any setbacks. We are complying with the side yard setbacks on both sides, the front yard and the rear yard. There's seventy-seven feet still remaining from the rear of our proposed addition to the rear of the site. We do need building height relief uh for both thirty-five feet and two and a half stories. We are at thirty-eight feet and three stories, so a little bit over what's allowed. But again, a lot of that has to do with the fifteen-foot grade change that I had mentioned. Um, we, we were cited for excessive floor area ratio at point six, but we're actually compliant at point five eight, so we're just under, we are close to it. We weren't quite sure why we were cited for that, uh, but we were. Um, the five-unit uh use, again, is not, it's Um, the five-unit, uh, use, again, is not, it's forbidden. Uh, we are in a two F five thousand zone, but I would say it's an oversized lot. We don't need any relief for lot area insufficient, any additional lot area insufficiencies. So five units based technically on lot size alone would be allowed. Um, and there is an existing multifamily residential precedent on the block. Um, so I would suggest that the proposed number of units does align with that, and the city goes for housing production, uh, near the transit resources. And we also maintain the existing structure. Again, we don't have any, uh, setback relief either. And the final point is we do require insufficient parking, uh, but we do provide one-to-one parking ratio with the five onsite spaces, which does align with BTD recommendations of a one-point-oh parking maximum, uh, ratio for residential uses in this area of Brighton. And then if Madam, uh, Ambassador could go through a few of the next slides, just quickly there, just renderings, just to give the board an idea, again, of the grade change and of what I already have shown you, uh, in plan in an elevation form. And, um, tried to be as efficient as I could, Madam Chair. Happy to go back, and I think David's up now, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Well, the BPDA flagged, um, accessibility issues of the architect can comment about, uh, addressing the accessibility unit, um, because you, if you have more than three units, you need an accessible unit.
So, this is David O'Sullivan, O'Sullivan Architects. Um, what we did, if you scroll down a little bit on this plan that you have there, right there, um, you're not able, we're not able, because it's an existing building and the street grade to the front door is so high, what we've done is, from the driveway, we have act, an accessible entrance off the driveway, and we did a internal lift from the basement, basement garage level up to the first floor, so the first two units.
Okay, perfect, thanks, so you did address it, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, no further questions.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we hosted an butters meeting for this project on February fifth, twenty twenty-four. A butters had questions and concerns about drainage, setback, privacy, the question of rental versus homeownership occupancy. Other attendees had concerns about trash removal, asbestos and fencing. We did receive one letter of opposition from a butters. The Brighton Olsen Improvement Association did support projects. With that, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Morgan McCray from Counselor Brayden's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support of this project. The counselor appreciates that the proponent is retaining the original structure and is adding on to the building. The house is, this house was originally built in the eighteen hundreds, so she does appreciate that they are retaining the building. She'd also like to request that the proponent, if possible, uh, uses permeable pavers in the driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer, and then caller eight, five, seven?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Fleming, and I live at five Hardwick Street. I'm a direct-to-butter, and I oppose the project for a few reasons. Um, they, they did promise to the McCormick family, who is there for fifty-plus years, that this is not something that they would do. I'm concerned about the density of the project with fifteen bedrooms, five units. I'm also concerned about the parking implications. Uh, we have, um, they have two units now, and half of those folks park on the street. We've lost four spaces recently appropriately in order to accommodate emergency vehicles going around the corner. We are not able to petition for new, um, permits in our neighborhood, so that's a problem for folks like us and others who don't have any access to off-street parking. The driveway excavation, thirdly, is concerning, given we have a mature tree that's within about five feet of that driveway, and we've lost many trees in the neighborhood, which is, of course, an environmental concern. And we're finally concerned about the design with the elevation, which you could see from the, the prior photos. There are, uh, renderings, there are like twenty-three windows on, on our side, and on the other side, there are multiple windows as well. So there's a lot, there'll be a lot of noise, a lot of light, and a lot of privacy, as well as lots of sunlight issues. Um, and I think I mentioned light pollution, if I didn't already. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Caller eight, five, seven?
Hi, hi, my name is Cindy Lux, and I'm not a direct-to-butter. I live around the corner at forty-four Hardwick Street in Brighton. And I too am opposed to this project for pretty much all the same reasons that Jen Fleming, the previous caller, just mentioned. And I just wanted to say that, you know, with the increasing density, uh, in the city, again, you know, not only parking, but also driving. I mean, there are cars lined up and down that street. And basically, if you're ascending Bigelow now, you know, two cars trying to pass, you know, becomes, becomes a, a, you know, there's driving hazard issues also related to the increased density, not to mention, you know, the lack of green space and places for some of the wild animals now running around our neighborhood, neighborhood to take refuge.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
A motion to approve BPDA design review.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Last case, Mr. Moransey.
Thank you, thank you.
So with that, we will return to case BOA, one, five, five, two, eight, three, four, with the address of three seventy-four Athens Street. Chair Moransey, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. My apologies, uh, Madam Chair, members, uh, Zoom froze when I attempted to, uh, activate my camera, so I'm not activating my camera this time. My name is George Moransey, I'm an attorney with the business address at three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Cedarwood Development, David Winnick and David Mateo. David Mateo was online with us tonight. Uh, Madam Chair, members, this is an application for a new four-story, three-family dwelling on a vacant lot at three seventy-four Athens Street in South Boston. The site is zoned MFR, multifamily residential. The building design is quite simple. The ground floor would consist of the main entry with the vestibule, uh, for unit one, containing a one-stop lift to provide accessible access to the second floor, where unit one is located, a nine hundred eighty-square-foot two-bedroom unit. The third floor would be unit two, a nine hundred twenty-square-foot two-bedroom unit, while unit three on the thir- fourth floor would be an eleven hundred thirty-square-foot two-bedroom unit. The roof would be unoccupied. The application requires zoning relief first in the form of a variance for insufficient lot size of four thousand square foot. Lot would be required for, uh, required by zoning for a three-family dwelling, whereas the lot here is approximately sixteen hundred twenty square feet. This site is within an area populated with many smaller lots with, um, building occupancies ranging from one to three families, making what is being proposed here not an outlier in terms of as-built conditions in the neighborhood. This includes in terms of the proposed four-story building height, which is zoning compliant, uh, and also which is the BPDA recommendation notes is relatively common in the surrounding neighborhood. A variance is required for excessive floor area ratio. The maximum in the sub-district is two, and what is being proposed is two-point-seven-three. There is insufficient usable open space with two hundred square feet per unit required by zoning and one hundred eighty square feet per unit being proposed through the combination of the rear yard and modestly-sized balcony serving each unit. A fifteen-foot rear yard setback is required, whereas a ten-foot rear yard setback is being proposed. There are side yard setback violations on the left side of the building. There would be a zero setback situation, which would abut an approximately five-foot-wide alley serving the abutting property. There would be no windows, of course, on the left elevation. On the right side, the provided setback would be two and a half feet, whereas the code requires three feet. On that side of the lot is a very large, uh, commercial parking lot. Finally, there are two violations attributable to the proposed off-street parking, which consists of two tandem spaces in a ground floor garage. The two spaces in tandem formation are in an area measuring approximately eleven feet wide by thirty-seven feet deep. This creates a violation for both insufficient off-street parking with four spaces required by zoning and for design of off-street parking owing to the tandem configuration. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moransey. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was hosted on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, during which time, community members expressed concern over the preservation of green space and maintaining a healthy rear yard setback. Um, retaining mature trees was also of concern, to which the proponent responded that trees would not be removed. Other concerns mentioned were building size, noting that the proponent met with a butters onsite after the meeting to address concerns. Our office received two letters of support and two letters of opposition, one specifically opposing roof decks, which aren't a part of the current proposal. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the board. This is Laura from Consult Office's office. Consultively, we would like to go on record in support, based on a good community process and good faith compromise of the neighbors that has resulted in previous concerns being satisfied for, satisfied for aid bodies in the civic group. Consultively and respectfully request the team to continue working closely with the neighbors during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
There's a second?
Second. Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, have a good day.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.